Good afternoon. Your troop is so calm compared to mine. Guys are so calm compared to mine.
Did your daughter do it last year?
Yeah.
Good afternoon. My name is Paul Semino, I'm your town moderator. I welcome you all to Southborough's 2019 Annual Town Meeting. I have been informed by our town clerk that a quorum of 100 registered voters is present, and therefore this town meeting will come to order. As your moderator, I'm responsible for the oversight and conduct of this town meeting, and I am pleased to see all of you here this afternoon, especially those that are attending our town meeting for the first time. I will do my best to honor your commitment to our town's governance by proceeding along as fairly and efficiently as possible. Now if you would all please rise as the Girl Scouts from Southborough troops post the national and local colors, and then remain standing as they lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. These are Girl Scouts from Troops 69241 and 66299 in Southborough. They are Lily Dumont, Annabelle Zaturka, Gabriella Moore, Ella Timmons, Abby Southie, Libby Caffrey, Lila Peters, Clarissa Truman, and Kiara Akis. Girls, please come forward.
Color Guards advance. Color Guards, present the colors. Ladies and gentlemen, the pledge of allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join in the singing of our National Anthem. Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming, and the rockets' red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof to the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? Color Guards, post the colors. Color Guards, dismissed.
Thank you. Thank you very much to these young ladies. You may all be seated. For the purpose of counting standing votes as needed today, eight volunteer tellers have been appointed and duly sworn by the town clerk. They are George Peterson, Mary Dombacher, Timothy Litt, Carla Sowers, Kevin Farrington, Debbie DeMouria, Peter Quirk, and John Butler. I thank them for their service as well. In New England, a town meeting, whether it is open or representative, serves as a legislative branch of town government. Town meeting decides whether to appropriate money to run a town, and considers whether to create, revise, or remove local town statutes known as bylaws. In Southborough, we operate by open town meeting, which means that every registered voter in this hall can participate and vote on all matters before the town meeting. A warrant is issued in advance of any town meeting for voters to be forewarned about the time, place, and substance of the matters to be considered. The warrant before us today is an orange-colored document, and in it you will find 35 articles to be considered. If we are able to move through the articles efficiently, my hope, and presumably yours, is to conclude this annual town meeting today. As we gather today on a Saturday, we are in uncharted territory as a town. Under our new bylaw that was passed last year, the Selectmen fix a town meeting week to begin on a Saturday in March, with the first day, today, being split into two sessions. The first session is from 1:00 until 5:00, and then following a two-hour recess, we reconvene tonight for a second session from 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., if necessary. If we do not finish our town's business today, we will return on Monday evening, the 25th, at 7:00 p.m. In keeping with our longtime-town practice, each session will continue until either the scheduled end time, until the article under consideration at that time is completed, or if a quorum is called and fails. As always, unless otherwise determined by statute or town bylaw, the conduct of town meeting is governed by the rules and practices contained in the latest edition of Town Meeting Time and Chapter 41 of our Town Code. Our past practice has been to allow non-registered voters into the hall at the start of the meeting. Typically, these people are non-resident town employees, members of the press, students from government classes, and the like. All non-registered voters must wear name tags issued by the clerk, and will not be allowed to speak unless approved by the hall. They are all sitting in an area on my right facing the stage. The non-registered voters present tonight are Brian Ballantyne, Treasurer; Amy Berry, Administrative Assistant to Town Clerk; Haley Bryn, Southborough Access Media; Mary Balsow from Central Mass Projects LLC; Sarah Cassell, the Director of Youth and Family Services; Paul Sibelli, Town Assessor; Melissa Danzuck, Conservation Agent; Trevor Dilman, Southborough Access Media; Ryan Donovan, Library Director; Megan Island, Assistant Director of Youth and Family Services; Lori Esposito, Administrative Assistant to the Board of Selectmen; Karen Galligan, DPW Superintendent; Vanessa Hale, Assistant Town Administrator; Michelle Jenkins, Assistant Town Clerk; Christine Johnson, Superintendent of Schools; Heidi Krieger, Town Accountant; Tom Laflamme, IT Manager; Pam LaFrancois, Senior Center Director; Laurie Livali, Building Commissioner; Greg Martineau, Assistant Superintendent of Schools; Joe Morrow, Interim Fire Chief; Heather Morris, Tradier Audio-Visual; Mareika Munzif, Economic Development Coordinator; John Parent, Facilities Director; Christine Penzone, Tradier Audio-Visual; Jonathan Phelps, Mestrowest Daily News; Paul Pazinski, Board of Health; Sarah Pragluski-Walsh, Algonquin Regional High School Principal; Mark Purple, Town Administrator; Karen Quinn, Corinna Quinn, Town Planner; Eileen Sanchez Heims, Assistant Library Director; Lynn Spencer, Spencer Sullivan Invoked; Brian Sterns, Veterans Agent; Terry Underwood, Southborough Access Media; and Ken Paulus, Police Chief. I also have Hytton Southie and Judy Southie, parents of Girl Scouts; Scott Hamilton, Mary-Jo Hamilton; Paul Stanton, who is here in regards to the Peggy Tuttle Award; and Chris Lusto of Assabett Valley. If there are no objections, we will welcome these people here tonight. Do I have the consent of the hall? Please raise your hands, and I will silence my phone. Thank you very much. As always at these meetings, I think all of us expect that we are, ladies and gentlemen, in our town generally, and certainly in a setting such as this. So first, and I was the first, please silence your mobile devices now, if you haven't already, and remember that nobody is permitted to place or take calls within the bounds of the hall. If you must place or take a call, you will need to leave the hall and use your phone only outside the auditorium space. More importantly, on the topic of decorum, our town meeting bylaw actually explicitly requires speakers to combine their comments to the article under consideration, as well as refrain from mentioning by name any other person present. In any case, I would hope that it wouldn't be necessary for me to admonish or otherwise hold anyone out of order in that regard. That's all I will say about that. If you picked up the Annual Town Report on your way in, you can find on page seven a list of the 52 individuals that our community lost in 2018. Again, that's on page seven of the Annual Town Report. Please join me in a moment of silence to remember all of those departed neighbors. Thank you very much. On a separate but related note, on the preceding two pages of the Annual Town Report, which is Pages Five and Six, you will find a very special dedication and a tribute to a great man that we lost just this past February 5th. Former longtime-town moderator, John Wilson. I urge you all to take the time to read those pages, for John's life of service was a brilliant example for all of us. Many of you knew John, either personally, or at least as the man who stood up at this podium for over two decades, leading our town meetings with grace and humor, or expertly coordinating and emceeing our Memorial Day and Veterans Day exercises every year, among many other ways that John served our town. On a personal level for me, it was John's legendary performance moderating the special town meeting that decided the future of Algonquin High School that was the inspiration for my own involvement in town service. After that meeting, I approached John a few weeks later, and he became a personal confidant and mentor to me ever since. On days like today, I will miss John the most. John's wife Sheila, a lifelong Southborough resident, is here today, and although John absolutely wouldn't like a moment of silence for his loss, he might have been okay with a round of applause instead, in celebration of his amazing service to all of us. Sheila, this is for John, in appreciation for all he meant to our town. Thank you, everybody. Finally, a few notes about our process today, which includes some changes from past practice, including one change in particular that's brand-new this year. First of all, all presentations will be made from the podium on the opposite side of the stage from me. As we go through the warrant, motions and other pertinent information about each article will be posted on the screen. As is now customary, your town clerk, Jim Hegarty, and your town council, Aldo Cipriano, are on stage with me, while your Board of Selectmen, chaired by Lisa Braccio, and your advisory committee, chaired by Kathy Cook, are sitting at tables down in the front. All of us up front are registered voters like you, but that being said, it's a good reminder that the primary and most prominent function of town meeting does not occur up on the stage or down the front tables, but it occurs out there through your questions, debates, and votes. Thus, as we proceed through each article tonight, any town meeting member can go to any of the microphones, first state their name and address, and then speak to the article or ask a question. Any town official wishing to join the debate will wait in the queue to speak to an article, as do any other voters. Any questions should be directed through me. No one may speak until recognized at a microphone by me. This includes calls to move a question. The only exceptions are a question of privilege or a point of order. If you wish to raise a point of order, you still must come to a microphone to be recognized. If someone moves a question, I will determine whether there has been adequate discussion, and may forestall that motion for the time being. Please note that I will not be explicitly asking the advisory committee or Board of Selectmen whether their position on any issue is support or non-support, simply because that information is either printed in the warrant or depicted on the front screen, or both. Tom, could you put an article up, just so I can show that, please? Well, this is not an article, but right here, in this upper-left corner, Advisory Support, Selectmen Support, that will be on each slide, so that information is available to you. Can everybody see this upper-left where I'm pointing? Of course, if any of you wishes to hear further about the Selectmen or advisory's position on a matter, you certainly may ask that question. I intend to focus our discussions today, which means that we will hear from anyone wishing to speak to an article, pro or con or otherwise, until I have determined that things are getting repetitive or belabored. At that point, I will suggest that we proceed to a vote. For each vote, I will remind you of the quantum of vote necessary to pass, for example, a majority or two-thirds, and then call for the vote. If I can gauge the prevailing vote from here, I will announce it, including declaring a two-thirds majority if necessary. If any seven voters rise to question my assessment of a vote count, or if I deem the vote too close for me to call, I will ask the tellers to come forward to count the votes. With that, I have examined the call of the town meeting, the receipt of the officers' return of service for the posting, and the return of the mailing. Under our rules, the moderator must read the entire warrant, either at the beginning of the meeting or prior to the motion introducing each article, unless a motion is made to dispense with that reading. Therefore, I now move to dispense with the reading of the call of the meeting and the officer's return of service, and to waive the reading of the separate articles of the warrant. Is there a second? All in favor? All against? That motion carries. All right. We've now arrived at what is called the consent portion of this town meeting, and this is new this year. We're going to go through this part very carefully, since this is the first time doing this for all of us. This process falls under a new bylaw adopted a year ago by the 2018 Annual Town Meeting. I hope most of you were able to pick up and read my I hope most of you were able to pick up and read my pink-colored handout on your way into the hall today. It's a two-sided sheet. It has a very clever title, "From the Moderator." Please read. If you weren't able to pick it up, that's okay. I will explain everything as best I can, and will certainly take any questions you may have. Under the new bylaw, the moderator may propose to the hall one or more groups of warrant articles to be considered together as a block, so that several articles that the hall considers routine may be disposed of one time in a single vote. Theoretically, this could save us considerable time for other matters on the warrant. Note that as the moderator, I only propose the list, but the hall must approve it. Therefore, before asking for that single summary vote, I will first go through the list one by one, and I will ask if any voter wishes to hold any article in the proposed consent group. If there is any hold, then that article is simply removed from the group, and it will be taken up as usual in the balance of the warrant. So, on the back of the pink handout is a list of the specific articles that I am proposing to group together today. The list is also projected on the front screen. Again, after we go through the list, what remains in that consent grouping at the end will be voted as a single package. Then we will proceed through the rest of the warrant. So I hope that this process is clear, but let me stop here if anybody has any questions about what I've just described. All right, a couple of additional important points before we read the list. Article one on the list is to hear committee reports. Take note that if we pass the list, we will still hear the committee reports. We're simply passing the article to do that, so we don't lose the committee reports by this process. Article two pertains to accepting donations from nonprofits. As some of you may know, there is an article further down in the warrant, Article 35, that speaks to our pilot process and seeks to make some changes there. This Article two does not in any way preclude consideration or passage of Article 35. This is just a routine authorization of Selectmen to accept pilot payments, whatever they may be. Any sponsor of one of the articles you see on the list has already consented to their article being on the list, so the individual sponsors of the articles are aware, and frankly, if they hadn't consented, they could just hold it and take it off the list, so it obviously makes sense that I spoke to them ahead. In our bylaw, it requires a vote of town meeting to take articles out of order in the warrant, a vote of the hall, if we are to take any articles out of order in the warrant. Clearly, that's what's happening here by operation of this process. So, I'm not going to hold a separate vote on that particular piece of our bylaw. Obviously, if we vote to do this, we are clearly assenting to taking articles out of order, but I just wanted to make that clear. So, I'm going to go through the list. Again, if anyone has any doubt at all, please feel free to hold the article. This is not intended to preclude discussion or in any other way, you know, move things along that you don't want moved along. Okay. So, for inclusion in our consent list, Article one, to hear committee reports. This is the annual consent to hear reports from town bodies, and I'll go through them, just shout out "hold" if you'd like to. Now, Article two, acceptance of donations, the annual acceptance of payments from nonprofits in town. Article three, short-term borrowing. This is the annual authorization to the Treasurer for short-term borrowing against anticipated revenue under state statute. Article four, to allocate bond premiums. So when we have premiums on our bonds, which is a nice thing to have, the state requires that we match those additional monies to the capital project associated with the bonds, so this article accomplishes that. Article six is the annual authorization for Selectmen or School Committee to enter into contracts greater than three years, but less than, or no more than seven. The Article eight Water Enterprise Fund creates a new Water Enterprise Fund, which is a state law best practice. An enterprise simply means revenue related to a certain subject is reserved for expenditure on that same. Article nine, funding of union contracts. This is annual funding article for new union contracts that have been entered into prior to today. Article 12, transfers to the water fund. This transfers the water, what's currently in the water budget into the new enterprise fund from Article eight. Basically, if you pass Article eight, now we've got to fund that new enterprise fund, and that's what's done by Article 12. Article 14 is the annual funding of retiree vacation and sick-time benefits. Article 15 is capital repairs, and that's an annual funding article for capital repairs and maintenance. I believe the amount is the same as last year. Article 16 is a golf revolving fund. Creates a revolving fund to apply golf course revenue to golf course expenses. Article seven is spending limits, spending caps, which is an annual article to set spending caps on all of the town's revolving funds. The list of those is printed in the warrant. So even though there may be more money in a revolving fund, the town does limit how much can be spent per year. And finally, Article 28, which is the Public Trees bylaw, Article 28 codifies our current practice, and putting it into a bylaw is required in order for the town to eventually be designated a quote-unquote "tree city." There's no cost to the town to create this bylaw, and that's what Article 28 is about. So I didn't hear any holds. I don't know if I have any questions about the process, but if not, then... Sorry, is there a hand? Yes, sir.
John Butler, Ford Davis Road, could you hold eight?
Could I pull eight?
Hold eight.
I'll hold eight, yes, sir. Eight is held. I think logically, well, logically, we hold 12, John, or can we vote 12 in case we eventually pass eight? What do you think?
It's okay with me.
You didn't, well, you didn't ask to hold 12. I just wanted to clarify. Okay. Yes?
Armando Inziguera, 14 Pearl Street, I have a question about 16. That revenue right now, where is it going before we create the fund?
Okay. Yeah. Why don't we hold then on 16, and then we'll take up substantive questions when we get And whoever knows the answer to that is somewhere in this hall, and before we get to 16, be ready, because it's not me. Yes, sir?
Yes, I, Lammy, 12 Bigelow Road. Item 28, does this mean you can't cut down a tree in your property? What's this one all about?
All right. Yeah. We're going to hold it, absolutely. Mr. Morris, you'll be ready for that. Any other questions? All right, so I have left then Articles... Wow, nice job, Tom. So, all kidding aside, Tom Laflamme, our IT guy, he's been straight out for two weeks, and this is how he rocks and rolls. So the list is now updated, and you'll see now we are going to vote 1, 2, 3, 4, 6, 9, 12, 14, 15, and 17. All those in favor of passage of this list of articles, this is a majority vote, please raise your hand. All opposed? Terrific. For something brand-new, I think we did a pretty good job with that. We will now... Thank you for that. We'll move to hear reports under Article one. Ms. Cook? Your mic is not on.
I was told not to touch this.
There it goes.
Okay, now it's on. I was told not to touch it. Now?
Yes.
Okay. Good afternoon. I am Kathy Cook, the current Chair of the Advisory Committee. The Advisory Committee functions as a subcommittee of town meeting. Its members are appointed by the moderator and serve three-year terms. Advisory is a legislative committee and has no executive authority. Advisory has four primary functions. First one is to develop and present a balanced budget to the town. The second is to review all warrant articles, including the non-money ones. Authority to review all aspects of town operations. And the fourth one is to maintain the reserve fund and authorize expenditures from that. The reserve fund is intended to be used for any emergency or any unexpected expenditures during the year. Advisory has reviewed all articles included in this year's warrant and has made a recommendation to either support or not support each one of them. Each advisory position is shown in the printed warrant. If anyone wants an explanation as to why Advisory has taken a particular position, please ask for it at the time the article is under consideration. We think it is important that you understand why we support or did not support a particular article when making your decision. In particular, one of the citizens petition articles, number 32, deals with various aspects of Advisory Committee. Advisory unanimously opposes the article and will explain the reasons for the opposition when the article is presented. The proposed budget for fiscal year 20 calls for expenditures of approximately $55 million. The proposed budget is expected to result in a approximate, everybody listen, 2.6% year-over-year increase in the average real estate bill for a homeowner. The drivers of this year's town's operating budgets are the cost of K through 12 schools. This is actually always true. The drivers are always the cost of schools, and then the three major town departments, police, fire, and DPW. So the proposed increases in each of those large departments for fiscal year 20 are 2% for K through 8, 1.2% for police, 0.3% for fire, and 1.5% for DPW. Additionally, Southborough's share of Algonquin's cost is flat year-over-year. That's because the allocation between Northborough and Southborough is extremely favorable to Southborough for fiscal year 20. That allocation is driven by the relative wealth of the two towns to each other and each town's school population. Southborough's going to have less students than it did a year before, which is part of it, and apparently the state in its complicated formula thinks that Northborough is getting wealthier compared to Southborough. Other important components of the town's budget are the cost of benefits provided to town employees and the annual cost of servicing or debt. Mr. Purple, our town administrator, will provide more details as to the components of the proposed budget shortly and the process undertaken to get to the final proposed budget. In March 2017, you voted to support the purchase of the St. Mark's Golf Course and to build a new public safety complex on a portion of that land. In late 2015, Advisory undertook a study to determine if we could afford to build the building without cannibalizing other desired projects, such as a new library and a new community center. Advisory assumed that the total cost of those three projects over 30 years would be about $40 million, with the public safety building being half of that, or $20 million. We concluded that the town could afford the new building and still have the capacity to undertake other capital projects totaling $20 million spread over several years. We are now seeing the support of that project come to fruition with the expected completion of the building this July. The conclusions reached by Advisory in 2015 remain valid. It's evidenced by the final cost of the building of approximately $19.2 million and a year-over-year increase for the first year that the debt is in our budget for just fiscal year 20 of 2.6%. The Chair of the Public Building Safety Committee, Mr. Malinowski, will present a report to you next that provides more details about that project. However, our work is still not done. We need to work to continue to control the year-over-year tax increases so that they remain reasonable. We also need to stay focused on the town's obligation to provide post-employment benefits to its retired employees. We have a large unfunded liability for those benefits, and if anyone wants to see the details of that, if you take a look at the financial statements that are posted on the town website for 6/30/18, you can read the footnotes that really go into great detail about what that unfunded number is. It's large. But we are chipping away at the liability by funding all current payments in each year's budget and adding an additional $250,000 each year to a savings account. We have many capital projects on our wish list, and will need to carefully schedule them to avoid an undesirable spike in real estate taxes over the next few years. You can find a list of those, of that wish list, being contemplated on page 69 of the budget book prepared by the town finance team. In case anyone doesn't know what the budget book is, it is the book prepared by Mr. Purple and his team that is also purple, that's sitting on the counter out there. So we go into great details about what people want to have done in the next five years. Lastly, in an effort to keep the year-over-year increases to a reasonable level, Advisory intends to focus on several new ways to generate revenue and/or reduce expenses over the next few months. Those include the following. So these are potential revenue generating opportunities. So the first one is, we're going to consider adding a local optional meals tax. The rate can go up to 0.75%, which means on a meal check of 50 bucks, you pay 39 cents or 38 cents more. On a $100, you pay 75 cents more. You already pay 6.25% to the state of Massachusetts when you eat at a restaurant, so this would be added on top of it, so the total cost would be 7% added to a check. We think that would generate between $100 and $150,000 each year of revenue. The second one is one that's been discussed a lot lately, and will be discussed later in Article 35. Advisory also agrees that we need to review our pilot program, our payment in lieu of taxes program, to see if there are ways that we can work with the nonprofits to generate some extra revenue to basically offset the services that they all use. We also want to review transfer station sticker fees. We want to review all the town revolving funds. We want to review the collection rate of payments. We think we may be able to find ways to increase that. And then, lastly, we want to review all town-owned buildings and surplus land parcels to see if there's some way to generate some one-time revenue by selling some things. There's quite a few parcels of land that may fall in that category. So that's our list of revenue generating opportunities, possible ones. Next, the slide is going to show... The next slide is going to show... This is the expense side. So we want to analyze the transfer station operations from beginning to end. We've got a very old transfer station. It's going to need a whole lot of work in the next few years, and so we want to look at it now before that money gets spent to see if that's really what we should continue to do. We want to analyze potentially some duplicate school and town functions. We want to review the policy for payment of sick and vacation time when someone retires. We want to review the structure of town departments, including the staffing, and we want to consider possibly looking at a municipal-like plan that a lot of cities and towns around Massachusetts already do. We've talked to a few of them, and they all seem to like it. They think it saves people money, so we just want to look at it and see what the pros and cons are, to see if it's something that we may want to do. So that's our laundry list right now. Anyone has any suggestions, you should come to Advisory or let us know what they are, and we will add those to our list, but that's what we intend to do over the next few months. One of the benefits to Advisory of having this accelerated town meeting is that we're going to have some more time to look at these things where we normally don't. Most of what I've said today is in our written report that's on the table outside, so feel free to grab that and read it again. We encourage anyone that has any questions to always let us know. We tend to meet on Tuesdays, and that's it. So thank you, guys, for coming, and enjoy the rest of the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Mr. Malinowski, you just take the microphone down front. I know you don't have anything for the screen. Try it again. No, you don't have to turn it on. It's being controlled in the back.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jason Malinowski, and I stand in front of you as the Chair of the Public Safety Building Committee, which consists of nine residents that are appointed by the Board of Selectmen that have worked very collaboratively as a team to bring the public safety building to fruition. About two years ago, I stood in front of you as then-Chair of the Public Safety Study Committee to advocate for this project. A year ago, I stood in front of you to say that we had received the bids literally the day before, and that the funding was looking good. As Ms. Cook alluded to today, the funding of the project looks to be on pace to deliver substantial savings to what we had originally planned. As of today, we are expecting to not spend about $3 million of the authorized funding for the project, which, over the course of the 30-year bond, will result in approximately $2 million of additional savings in interest that had been planned. So the payments, both gross and net, that you were expecting based on your overwhelming approval back in 2017, is now going to be less than what we had on the screen at that point in time. Furthermore, we're going to deliver a well-overdue and world-class facility for our police and fire safety personnel, and to bring this to fruition, I just wanted to also recognize And to bring this to fruition, I just wanted to also recognize not only the hard work of our committee but countless departments, both in-town and as well as our consultants. And we're really keeping a close eye on how our consultants are operating to make sure that your money continues to be spent in a very prudent matter as we move towards our July move-in date. We look forward to celebrating the opening with you either late summer or early fall once the departments have had time to move into the facility and get acclimated to their new facilities. But I also wanted to, in closing, recognize three individuals that have been very helpful to us from the town throughout the process. Town Administrator Mark Purple, Police Chief Ken Polis, and a special thank you to retiring Fire Chief Joe Morrow, whose efforts throughout the process, not only bringing it forward, but really up until, you know, his final days of employment with the town, have been very beneficial to bringing this project forward with such success. So thank you to all of you.
Actually, Ms. Connolly from EDC, you're up next. In keeping with his reputation for bringing things in and beating expectations, Mr. Malinowski's time on the mic just now was less than three minutes. EDC, Ms. Connolly.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Julie Connolly. I'm the Chair of the Economic Development Committee. I just wanted to give you a very brief update on what the EDC has been up to this year and what our plans are going forward. Quick overview of two thousand eighteen, we continued our efforts to work with our local businesses. We are promoting our shop local guide that we're sharing with both residents and businesses. That's a snapshot of it. It's now mobile, so you can access it directly from your phone, call businesses, straight from your mobile device. What I want to spend most of my time here today is updating you on our downtown initiative. This started back in two thousand seventeen toward the end of the year when we, the EDC members, were getting a lot of questions about what are you going to do about the downtown? And so we started by putting out a survey that was, we were happy to have four-hundred-and-twenty-seven responses to it, and we kind of, we thought, well, you know, we asked people, don't worry about all the things we know we can't do. Let's, you know, give us your wish list of what you'd like. And there was a lot of support for things like additional small restaurants, coffee shops, bakeries, pubs, small-scale retail. There was strong support for mixed-use development, beautification efforts. So we took that, and we knew that, you know, it was going to take more than just finding somebody who wanted to put in a coffee shop downtown because we don't really have the infrastructure in place to support that. So we engaged with a group called the Urban Land Institute, who came out here at the end of last May, and they spent a day working with a couple, they put together panels of residents who live downtown, businesses who live downtown. They met with our local officials, and they spent a lot of time going into digging through a lot of information we provided about the town, and they put together a report with some recommendations. So we took that report and we analyzed it, and just this past February, we had a forum where we invited people in town to come. We were pleasantly surprised to have a lot of people be able to join us that evening. And we talked about the suggestions of ULI and what our next steps would be. We talked a lot about creating the downtown as a sense of place, as sort of that crowning gem of our community where people can come together with their families to have coffee, to attend events, and how we can make it a nicer, more attractive place to come while keeping the historical feel that is so important to all of our residents. We talked about identifying certain parcels that are underutilized downtown and how we might be able to make those into, use those as opportunities to make the downtown a better place to come. And we talked about making it more connected to the rest of town so that people are better able to access it. But obviously, kind of the elephant in the room is the infrastructure. So everybody knows that we don't have adequate wastewater treatment downtown to support a restaurant or to support local businesses. So that's one issue that we're working on. We have put together a downtown subcommittee where we're specifically working on zoning, sewage, and beautification efforts, and we're also looking in funding resources. We understand that in this climate here in Southborough right now, we're not going to be able to rely on the town to put together some of these big-ticket items, but we are working to find other solutions. There are grants that are available. We've also been working with other towns. Southborough is unique in a lot of ways, but at the same time, there are lots of other towns in Massachusetts just like Southborough that have had to overcome these infrastructure issues by virtue of being older towns that weren't initially developed with the infrastructure needed to support some of these things we want to do. So we're looking into that as well. Our drumbeat from the beginning has been transparency and community involvement, and we really hope that we'll continue to have people attend our meetings and provide their input, and we'll be continuing to put information out there as it becomes available. I also want to take one second to mention that, to thank Claire Reynolds, who has been our interim EDC Coordinator and done a fabulous job for the past several months, and to welcome Maritza Mutsev, who has joined us just this past week, and we're excited to get her started. So please reach out to her or to me or to any of the members, and we look forward to moving forward with this in two thousand nineteen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Connolly. Next is Ryan Donovan, Library.
Hello. I'm Ryan Donovan, the Director of the Southborough Library. I am here to provide a brief update on what's been happening at the library. I would like to thank everyone after the devastating flood on September eighteenth. Patrons and residents have been so understanding and supportive. Special thanks go to the Friends of the Southborough Library and to David Garden for hosting a benefit concert at the Fay School last November. One of the positive changes we are now making is moving our young adult collection downstairs and opening a brand-new teen room. Despite not having access to a children's room for over six months, children's librarian Kim Ivors was able to continue offering a consistent and ongoing program for our youngest library patrons. While challenging our temporary children's space upstairs, offered materials and events for kids with as little disruption to normal library operations as possible. The library asked for feedback in a new community survey last fall in two thousand eighteen. Three-hundred-and-fifty-five people responded. We heard you. You want more programs at the library, a lot more. As always, please continue to let us know what we can do to improve your library. Please join us for a strategic planning forum on Tuesday, April second, at seven P.M. Candidates Night will take place on Thursday, May second, at six-thirty P.M. We hope that you can join us. The library has several new groups to join. Hungry, join our new cookbook club. Like science fiction, listen in on our new audiobook club. Both meet once a month on Thursday evenings, but don't fall to pieces. Our new monthly puzzle club now connects on Friday mornings. In the last year, the library hosted well over three-hundred programs for our users. We now offer a bimonthly chess program on Saturday afternoons hosted by our Assistant Director, Aileen. Want the hottest books? Get them right now at the Southborough Library. Come in and check out our new express books. They circulate for two weeks with no renewals. Finding a current bestseller to check out has never been easier. The library continues to seek grants. In two thousand nineteen, we will host a series of expanded monthly afternoons for ages ten and up. We are also offering a new Story Fest week promoting literacy for children, all thanks to the Southborough Community Fund, a fund of the foundation for Metro West. The Southborough Cultural Arts Council is supporting a vision board collage creation event, as well as Wednesday evening series of ballroom dancing in June. Despite physical limitations with our downstairs exhibit area, the library was still able to host exhibits from local artist Lori Blanchard, collage artist Jackie Hawk, and our most current exhibit, Inuit Masks from Grade Four Neary Students. Later tonight, the library is seeking approval for a historical restoration project via the Community Preservation Committee. This is the next and final phase of the library facade restoration project following our assessment request at town meeting last year. We hope that you will consider supporting this article to help preserve the library's historic exterior built in nineteen twelve. Please make an investment in your library's history. The Peggy Tuttle Award for Library Service Distinction is named in honor of library staff member Peggy Tuttle, who contributed over thirty years to the library. This year's recipient and long-term library volunteer, quote, "demonstrates her library's support by delivering books to infirm patrons in her neighborhood that do not have transportation." In addition to delivering, she also returns library materials for friends and neighbors that are unable to get to the library. Please join me in congratulating the two thousand nineteen Peggy Tuttle Award winner,
Thanks, Ryan. Next, Ms. Luttrell. Talking about the master plan.
Good afternoon. I'm Mimi Luttrell, a member of your elected planning board, and I wanted to update you on an endeavor the planning board is taking to update the master plan, which was last updated in two thousand and eight. The master plan is a long-term visioning document that is the basis for decision-making in the future and helps guide town growth while helping to preserve what we all love about Southborough. To create a vision document that represents our community, the planning board established a master plan committee comprised of stakeholders representing a diversity of ideas and viewpoints. This is the group of very talented and enthusiastic volunteers who make up the master plan committee. I am the Chair. Judith Watson of the Conservation Commission is the Vice Chair, and Kathy Bartolini from the Economic Development Committee is the Secretary. Our first meeting was held on March sixth. Our next meeting will be held on April third at the Senior Center. All our meetings are open to all, are posted on the town website. We welcome anyone to attend. We will also be holding public outreach events, so I ask you to look out for those. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And finally, we'll hear briefly from Mr. Probst from the Municipal Technology Committee.
Ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. My name is Matthew Probst from the Municipal Technology Committee. As with the other committees, I'm here to present a little bit about what we've done in the past year, where we are now as a town, and where we're going or where we want to go. So over the past year, we have a few different accomplishments. We've, of course, most recently, we've reviewed the fiscal year twenty tech budgets and spends, not just the budgets but the actual technology behind that with expert opinion, understand, making sure that the technology spends are good for a long-term strategic direction for the town. We've also worked with the town IT Administrator, reviewed the new licensing and permitting system, the new records request system, public safety radio upgrade that is occurring as part of the new public safety building. And we, for that, we pulled in an external expert on radio systems to make sure that the radio vendor is selling us what we need as a town. We've helped out with the fiber product, project design. That was from last year, a article last year for spending and buying some fiber for the towns to connect, to connect several town buildings and to save the town money. And it's enabled even more savings than we expected. We've been able to decommission a couple of servers, computer servers in the town, saving us additional costs. We helped the library with the screen. We've assisted with a security incident in the town. That was a disclosure incident. We've also, of course, highlighted for the importance of security, resiliency, privacy, et cetera, across all town IT systems. We've appointed reps, appointed reps to the Cable Committee and the Master Plan Committees to bring a tech perspective to the town. We're also developing sort of citizen technology use surveys, and we're trying to become much more metric-driven, data-driven, become a data-driven town in everything that we do, especially tech spend. We've completed the first year's draft of a five-year strategic tech plan, and you're welcome to go to the town website to review that. And I'd like to review right now basically the results of that plan. So we've outlined it for five years, where do we want to be, and we've driven it down, we boil it down to a number of key metrics and key results. And each of these is joined into a few different areas of technology. Basically, first of all, citizen experience with town technology, and this is the average score across that area. If you want the actual underlying metrics, please review the tech plan. It actually contains the underlying metrics of where we want to be for each of these areas. Employee and school admin experience, in this case, we don't have enough data, and this is where we want to have, we're putting in place some surveys to help give us the data we need. Cost savings through consolidation efficiency, we're not doing enough there, but these metrics give, again, give us guiding principles to where we want to move forward, how to become more efficient in cost savings and consolidation. Communications and processing and infrastructure connectivity, again, we're pretty low right now. And also, the last area is citizen-employee privacy and cybersecurity. One thing we don't have is a strategic technology security plan, an infosec plan as a town, and that's one thing our committee will be driving. So these are our current scores. Our goal is to, towards our five-year goal, and our goal, our focus over the next year will be to take these and work with the respective town committees and advisory and the Board of Selectmen in making sure we implement the policies necessary to improve these metrics over the next year. Also, we want to, of course, gain additional metrics by, through a variety of surveys to both the citizens and the employees, so we have accurate data. And of course, we'll continue to review tech spends and so forth so we can use these metrics to influence next-year budgeting priorities. Of course, I had mentioned, we want to develop a comprehensive cybersecurity plan. Finally, the last point here is our key ask for the community is, if you have any suggestions, comments, feedback, please email us. And we're also looking for a volunteer data scientist or statistician. So if you have any expertise in the area, we'd love to have your volunteer work, especially with respect to assisting us on these surveys and their survey result. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Probst. We now move to Article Five, Ms. Brascio.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer sixty-five-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents CPC and water funds of the bond sale premium paid to the town upon the sale of its ten-million-five-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand-dollar general obligation municipal purpose loan of two thousand eighteen bonds issued on May seventeenth, two thousand eighteen, as authorized by MGL Chapter Forty-four, Section Twenty, as amended, to pay costs of twenty-three-ten-dash-one-fifty-six debt CPA Burnett House, thirty-seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars and nine cents, seven-ten-four-fifty-six debt water fund, twenty-eight-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Brascio.
That's fine. This is just to pay the costs of the debt for the CPA Burnett House and the debt of the water fund.
For those of you that are sharp-eyed, this list is much shorter than what you see in the warrant. This article actually would have been very appropriate for the summary list we took up at the beginning, but because it's different than what was announced in the warrant, it wasn't appropriate to do that. Any questions, comments? All right, this requires a majority vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Article Seven, Ms. Rosenblum.
Good afternoon. Betsy Rosenblum, five Strawberry Hill Road. I'm the Chair of the Personnel Board. The Personnel Board, if you don't know, administers the town's The Personnel Board, if you don't know, administers the town's personnel bylaw, which is also known as the Salary Administration Plan, or SAP. You can read more about what we do in the Town Report at page 22. Among other tasks, it's our job to review the bylaw every year and make recommendations to the town meeting. Our recommendations for the FY '20 SAP appear in bold in the warrant, Article Seven, starting on page 10. There were also two handouts outside, thanks to the clerk. He has them printed in our signature blue color. Thank you, Mr. Hegarty, and your staff. One is the SAP showing the full track changes. This is something we started to do a couple of years ago, so people could see what goes out as well as what's coming in. The other is a section-by-section explanation. I got it down from 10 pages last year to six pages, so that's progress. Given the number of articles in the warrant, I'm not going to do a formal presentation. I do want to acknowledge and thank the other members of the board, Russ Millholland, Jay Dietz, Barry Rubenstein, and Dorian Jazinski. I was now planning to move the article as printed in the warrant, but an astute member of the public stopped me on the way in and pointed out a typo, more of a Scrivener's error in the SAP. If you turn to your handout or to the warrant to Schedule A in Section 20, the full-time position salaries, there is a little mistake there. It says hourly rates for full-time positions, and you'll see they go up to $130,000. This is not the federal government. This is just Southborough.
Ms. Rosenbloom.
The word hourly should read, oh, sorry, did I just insult someone who works for the federal, forget I said that. Don't make jokes contemporaneously on Town floor. That should read annual.
Ms. Rosenbloom, hold on a second, please. So, first of all, my mistake, because I was distracted when you took the mic. You did need to make the motion to put the article on the floor, and what you're talking about right now
Yep.
is basically an amendment to it.
Motion to amend, okay.
So, let's do some housekeeping here.
So, I was supposed to preface my remarks by, I'll get this straight by next year, Mr. Moderator. Thank you.
If you could make your motion, please.
I move Article Seven as printed in the warrant.
Do I have a second? Okay.
I move to amend. Article Seven? As printed in the warrant?
By striking?
I'm just, I'm looking for your permission to continue.
Okay, so by striking X and substituting Y. Put it in that form, please.
Okay. I move to amend the personnel bylaw, Article Seven, Section 20, Schedule A, after the table for full-time salary graded positions. Strike the word hourly. Insert the word annual in its place.
Do I have a second? All right, the most, no, no, I know. You're gonna have to put that in writing and sign it for the clerk.
Before the vote or after the vote?
Well, he wants it before. Let's do it. My understanding is there may be another amendment to this article.
No.
I know, but let me just, yes? Does the clerk have that one? Ms. Malinowski, does your amendment amend what Ms. Rosenbloom is amending right now?
No.
We'll keep rolling. I know it's hard to see, but the amendment itself is updated in real time on the screen. What's that, Mr. Hegarty? Mr. Hegarty? What's that? Okay, so the motion, the motion to amend is to strike the word hourly and substitute the word monthly on the table in question?
Annually.
I'm sorry.
Annual.
Um, thank you. Any comment or question on that limited motion to amend? All right, all those in favor, this is a majority vote, all of them in favor of the motion to amend, please raise your hand. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, with that amendment.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rosenbloom. Yes, Ms. Malinowski.
Chelsea Malinowski, 1 William Calerily, also a member of advisory. I'd like to move to amend the main motion under Article Seven by striking the words energy management stipend for $6,000. Advisory.
Where is that in the motion?
That is on page 23, Section 20, Schedule E.
Hold on one second, please. All right, the clerk is asking if you are speaking on behalf of advisory or are you just here as a private citizen?
I am speaking as part of advisory.
Yes, and I understand that your motion, your amendment is already submitted to the clerk, correct?
It is.
All right, go ahead and speak to it, please.
Okay. Advisory appreciates the amount of work and value that the employee has done for the energy management stipend. However, there are concerns for the precedent the stipend sets for the town. We have many employees who write grants and we are concerned about similar requests from those employees. We believe this could be more properly addressed through evaluating the employee's job description within the SAP. If the employee is performing the function, the employee deserves his work to be incorporated into his description and be reimbursed for it.
Okay, Ms. Rosenbloom.
I can speak to how it ended up in the SAP if anybody's interested, or if the hall just wants to debate the motion, that's fine. I'm just here to answer questions if people have them.
All right, and so people know, can you, again, Ms. Malinowski, just identify exactly where this amendment is in the SAP?
Sure. So, there's a section of the SAP at the end called stipends. It's at the end of the SAP. Let me get a page number for you. I'm sorry, I did not know this was coming today. Thank you. Schedule E, miscellaneous annual compensation, on page 23. So, there is a number of pre-existing stipends. You see energy management stipend in bold. So, just a little bit of background on how stipends get into the SAP for you, again, it's not in the SAP, it's for you to approve, it's to this body. It's a town bylaw. You are the legislature. The Personnel Board merely makes recommendations. In the normal course of things, and I've been on the board now about a year and a half since September 2017, members of the Personnel Board do not wake up one morning and say, "Ooh, I think we need an energy manager stipend." Typically, requests come to us to reclassify employees for any number of things that are covered by the SAP. So, this request came to us from the town administrator. I attended two Board of Selectmen's meetings, I think it was two meetings where this was discussed and what I would consider fully vetted and approved by a majority of the Board of Selectmen. And that's when it came to us. We evaluate it. We're five citizens, I think there were four of us sitting at the time, listened to the arguments for and against. We had a memo from the town administrator, and we approved it by a vote of three to one. One of our members was not present. I also attended an advisory pre-town meeting meeting at which we discussed this, again, somewhat at length, and I was not present for the vote, but I understand that one of the members did have a problem with it. So, by majority vote of the Personnel Board, it is given over to town meeting to decide. We were swayed by, I wouldn't say swayed in any negative way, but we did have a memo before us from the town administrator, and we acknowledged the work that was done. I personally and any member of the Personnel Board who wants to get up and talk about why they voted the way they did, we were told that two years ago, this employee was tasked with this large responsibility and told that he would be compensated for it, and he was not. Originally, a figure was mentioned to me of $15,000 a year. Ultimately, my understanding is $6,000 was the figure that was arrived at through negotiation and compromise. But to be clear, it's not the Personnel Board's call. It's our call to recommend it to you. It's your call whether or not to vote it. Thank you very much.
I actually have to go to Mr. Butler next, and then Ms. Vanniff.
John Butler, Ford Davis Road. I think that what I would like to hear specifically addressed is the answer to the question that was posed by the member of advisory who recommended this amendment. And the question really is, why administratively handle a compensation issue in this way in particular rather than as a salary increase for a particular position? It seems to me as though there has to be a strong reason for this sort of exceptional handling of it and not merely that someone took on some additional responsibilities. If so, why not roll it into their regular compensation? Could someone speak to that specific question of why do it this way?
Mr. Butler, did you, I thought at the beginning of your remark, you were asking advisory for...
Well, this, I guess this came through the town administrator, the Board of Selectmen, and the Personnel Board. It would seem that if advisory is questioning that it maybe shouldn't be handled this way, then presumably one of the approving, somewhere in the approving chain that can handle, would be able to answer
Yes.
why we should handle it.
Yes, sure. Okay, Ms. Rosenbloom, do you want to speak to that, please?
To mine? Now, so this position, so, two things. What we were told by the town administrator, my understanding is, this is a package of effort that could be done by a different employee next year. So, the idea is that the stipend goes with the work, not with the position. That employee could choose to retire next year. We certainly hope he does not. But if he were to move on or not be here for any reason, the next person may not undertake to do this, they may not be asked to. My understanding from Mr. Purple is that in many communities, this has become a separate job, in which case you'd be looking to spend a lot more than $6,000 to hire someone to do this function. The second thing is, my understanding, and again, I'm not a personnel expert, there is no mechanism currently.
Well, you're the best one we have. Do your best.
Thank you. My understanding is there is no way currently, it's not like the private sector where a lot of us work and have worked. Your boss doesn't come to you as an SAP employee and say, "Great job. Here's an additional $6,000." There's no mechanism for that. And my understanding is that's why Section E has evolved, to handle special cases where there is no other way to do it. We don't have a mechanism. We have a salary grid. Whether we mislabeled it hourly or annual, we're stuck with it. So, that's how it goes. This employee is in a certain classification and a grade, and there is no precedent for jumping a salary $6,000. And I would welcome, I mean, everything I know about this came from Mark Purple, so if it's appropriate, if the selectman would like to speak on it or have him speak on it, I'm kind of at the limit of, I do have a memo, which I could read out loud to you from the town administrator, but maybe it would make more sense to hear from the folks that orchestrated this in the first place. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Vanniff. Can we turn on the center mic down front, please, Heather?
This has been a back-and-forth issue. It's not even an issue. It's a job description that has not been developed around this position. It's either a new position that the town of Southborough would have to hire to fulfill this obligation. With the timeframe that we had with town meeting and the review of the job description, this was a mechanism to address that. The Board of Selectmen had a vote to approve. I was the one individual that did not agree with using stipends as a mechanism to pay for work done that's not in a job description. We reconsidered it, I believe it was about two weeks ago, so that I could change my vote for this town meeting with the understanding the town administrator, the Board of Selectmen will review the employee's job description and incorporate those duties moving forward.
All right, thank you. Mr. Butler.
Last question, Mr. Moderator. Did, and I want to thank Selectmen for that answer, did advisory take a vote on this amendment? What was the vote?
Let's grab a mic, please.
We did take a vote on the amendment just before the town meeting began, and it was four to two.
In favor?
In favor of the amendment.
Yes, sir, over here.
Hi, Carl Guyer, 146 Middle Road. Most of you are probably sitting here wondering, what the heck is this all about? What this involves is, a couple of town meetings ago, we passed some warrant articles so Southborough could become designated as a green community. And as a result of that, through the work of our facilities manager, we have gotten close to $400,000 worth of grant money to do improvements, mostly to the schools, for energy efficiency, right? I'm not sure if we delete this and not pass this, if we will stop that effort. I know there's more things on the table, and hundreds of thousands of dollars are at stake if we don't apply for these funds, right? So, I hope, hopefully, we won't find ourselves cutting ourselves a nose off despite our face for $6,000. So, I hope we can find a way to solve this problem.
All right, thank you. Ms. Rosenbloom, anything new beyond what you've said?
Yeah, just if the voters are interested, when I first found out about this, I did look up. There is a Green Communities website where the town publishes the grants. So, if anybody like me likes to see primary sources, the state lists us as having two grants, one of 142,865, and another, just last year, July 18, $250,000.
All right, thank you. Let me try to frame.
And I do want to add one thing, Mr. Moderator. Personnel Board voted on this. I went before advisory. I think a majority of advisory, that was the pre-town meeting meeting a couple of weeks ago, Personnel Board did not know this amendment was coming. I understand you're all volunteers, you met this morning, so Personnel Board has not had a chance to meet or to address it. So, I'm the only one up here addressing the amendment.
Yeah, and let me just frame this clearly. This is really an administrative amendment. I don't think anybody's suggesting this is not important work or that the town should not get this work done. The question is, do we pay it through the stipend as printed, or do we pay it some other way is sort of the amendment motion on the floor? I don't think we need to talk about whether the work is important or not. I think we all agree that it is. All right, I think this will be our last comment. Go ahead.
Margaret San Giorgi, 3 Meadow Lane. I just want to make sure that I understand correctly. The employee has already done the work. He was promised money. He is now going to be denied that money, and he will not get paid for the work he did if we take this amendment.
Correct. Well, he won't get paid under this table. There may be some other way. I think that's a suggestion of advisory, but I understand.
Yeah, so we're gonna deny him the money that he was promised.
Yeah, I don't think that's correct. I think the mechanism is in the SAP right now, advisory suggesting it can be done some other way.
Yes, they said that they were going to add it to a payroll in a future date. That does not pay for past work done.
Okay, fair enough. I'm gonna stop it right there, Ms. Rosenbloom. I think we're ready to vote.
Thank you.
Any other comment or question from anybody who has not taken the mic? Ms. Jazinski.
Dorian Jazinski, 33 Presidential Drive. I am a member of the Personnel Board. I think it's really important that we all know that Mr. Parent was directed by our town administrator to do this work. He was promised compensation. He's been doing this work for three years. He has saved the town in grant money, I think over $400,000, and we have another grant that looks like we're getting it, that's another $200,000. grant that looks like we're getting it, that's another two hundred thousand. We've already brought in, I believe, Mr. Purple, over twenty thousand dollars this year alone in savings that the town actually has the money for. Nineteen thousand. He was promised compensation. He has done the work. It's not in his job description. Maybe we need to change the job description and compensate him by changing his grade and raising his salary, but right now, this gentleman has done right by this town, and in my opinion, we need to support him and we need to pay him for the job he has done. Changing it going forward is great, but this gentleman has done a lot of good for this town, and we have a lot of money coming in from grants going forward because of what he has done. I'm asking you all to please approve paying the stipend. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Challen.
Roger Challen. Microphone challenged, Roger Challen. Twenty-nine Oak Hill Road. Two quick things, and Ms. Cook's behind me, she may answer one of them. Could advisory confirm that the main concern about this line item is a precedent issue? And my second question is, I think, I suspect this hall is very much in support of making sure this gentleman gets his money. So what I haven't heard, and maybe I just missed it, is, is there, if this isn't the way to do it, is there some other way to do it that has already been identified? Because I think that, you know, that seems to be the important issue.
Ms. Cook, you are next.
Kathy Cook, Chair of the Advisory Committee. I think we are misunderstanding what is being proposed here. There's no proposal on the table today to pay the person who did the previous grant work for that work. The six thousand dollars is prospective. It's for the year ending fiscal year twenty, for the work that would be done during the fiscal year twenty. So we're not trying to pay him for the work that's been done the last three years. And advisory's concern is what Mr. Challen suspects. We are concerned about the president. We've got others that are also applying for grants. The library applies for grants. The schools apply for many grants. These, a person at the senior center applies for grants. So we just don't think it's fair that we single out one person who's going to apply for grants and not consider everyone else. We want the grants to be applied for, so the speaker before that was worried that we weren't going to do this, absolutely want the grants to be applied for. And maybe there's going to be a better way we can find to do all the town's grants down the road. We're not there yet, but the concern is, what I just stated, is the president said it, because there are others also applying for grants that aren't being compensated separately for that work.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, what's before us now is Ms. Malinowski's amendment, which is on the screen, which is to strike the line you see on the screen in the SAP. This amendment requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your cards. I'm sorry, majority vote, I'm sorry. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All those opposed to the amendment, okay? Amendment fails. We're now back to the main motion, which is the salary administration plan with Ms. Rosenbloom's amendment, and this also requires a majority of vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed? All right, that motion carries. We're on to Article Eight. Mr. Kalinda.
Did we vote on seven as a whole? Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Chapter Forty-four, Section five-three F-one slash-two of the Massachusetts General Laws establishing the Water Fund as an enterprise fund effective July one, 2019.
Is there a second? All right, Mr. Kalinda.
Mr. Moderator, as recommended by our town's auditor, this formally creates a water enterprise fund, which segregates water revenue and expense from the general fund. It's considered best practice.
All right, and Mr. Butler, you held this, so I'm going to go to you first.
Yes, John Butler, Ford Davis Road. I held this partially because at times in the past, town meeting has passed things and said later on, "Hey, we didn't know we did that." The warrant doesn't specify what the general law contains. A couple of questions therefore. First of all, right now, water rates have to be, are normally or conventionally approved by the Board of Selectmen approximately annually. Does this change the governance of the water department specifically with regard, in any way, or specifically with regard to setting rates? And I have one or two other questions to follow if we could.
All right, can we speak to that one, Mr. Counsel?
Are we going to have you, Mr. Ballantyne?
All right, so we're being asked, what is the substance of the statute that we're adopting here? I think it's fair to say, Mr. Butler, that question was not anticipated, so I'm not sure we're going to get a good answer on that.
I don't need a whole discourse on the statute. Just want to know who sets the water rates if we approve this. That's one, that's question one. I may as well continue with question two while someone figures out who can answer this. Second question is bonding. Is this, if we establish an independent enterprise, do bonding agencies typically look at that as an independent fiscal entity, or is there any change with respect to the bond rate that we're likely to get if we establish this independently for future water projects, or is it simply regarded as the town's credit?
Yeah, I'm going to, I hope Mr. Ballantyne can come out and respond to that one. Brian? Did you hear the question?
I did. Brian Ballantyne, Treasurer Collector. So to answer your questions, we've been operating under what we call Special Revenue Fund for Water for a number of years. I know you're familiar with that, Mr. Butler. That is about eighty-five percent of the way towards the enterprise fund. This last fifteen percent just formalizes it, and basically, the rates are still set by the Selectmen, by the way. Hasn't have anything to do with rates. Basically, what it does do is requires the town to report the Water Fund totally separate from the town. There is no formal, although it is in a separate fund right now, there is no formal statutory requirement to do that. And importantly, what it requires the town to do is segregate and do a formula annually for its functions that the general government does for the water department, and vice versa. So you'll see a line item in the wrap-up budget motion that there's a transfer from the Water Fund. That is going to be required now. We never had to do that before. In other words, we are paying for services the water does for us. Water is paying for services we do for them. So my department runs payroll for water department employees. We now have to account for that and charge it back to the Water Fund. All capital projects and bonding, same. It's basically that. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments on Article Eight? All right, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor of Article Eight, please raise your cards. All opposed? Motion carries. Article Ten, Ms. Braccio.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote indefinitely postpone this article.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Ms. Braccio.
Due to at this time, there is no unexpected or unusual funding. There currently isn't a need for this article.
All right, any question or comment about indefinitely postponing Article Ten? This is also a majority vote. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article Eleven, Fiscal Year Twenty Operating Budget. Mr. Shea.
I move that the town vote to raise a sum of money not to exceed the sum of fifty-two million, seven hundred seventy-three thousand, six hundred thirty-four dollars, as may be necessary for the town's use, and make appropriations of the same. Transfer from the cemetery perpetual care, fifteen thousand dollars. Transfer from free cash, one million, four hundred eighty-nine thousand, one hundred seventy-two dollars. Transfer from overlay reserve, two hundred seventy-three thousand, one hundred eleven dollars. Transfer from Fay PS donation account, ten thousand dollars. Transfer from donation account Harvard, ten thousand dollars. Transfer from ambulance fund receipts reserved, Fund Twenty-three, four hundred seven thousand dollars. Transfer from septic betterment fund, fifty-two thousand, seventy-nine dollars. Transfer from reserve SBAB fund balance, thirty thousand, eight hundred thirty-six dollars. Transfer from water enterprise fund, one hundred thirty-one thousand, two hundred thirty-nine dollars. Transfer from fund, two-two-six-one, nine-eleven revolving, forty-five thousand dollars. Transfer from three-four-eight-seven DPW fuel tanks, eighty-three thousand, thirty dollars. Transfer from premium reserve funds, two hundred twenty thousand, seven hundred eighty-nine dollars, and that the balance of fifty million, six thousand, three hundred seventy-eight dollars be raised and appropriated.
Okay, motion's been made, and there's a second. Let me describe this process. For those of you who are not familiar with it, we have a substantial operating budget printed in the warrant under Article Eleven. There are several, a couple of dozen at least, line items that we will go through line by line, similar to the process we had for the consent group of articles at the beginning of this meeting. Anyone wishing to hold a particular budget line item can just shout out "hold" as we go through, and we will save that for discussion later. If not, we will, at the end of that listing, vote the non-held articles as one single vote, and then we will go back to what was held and discuss those. Any questions about that process? Like I said, very similar. All right, then we'll start to go through each budget, and if you can see it, they'll be up on the screen as we go through as well. Line one-fourteen, Moderator. Line one-twenty-one, Elected Board of Selectmen. Line one-twenty-two, Board of Selectmen. Line one-thirty-one, Advisory Committee. Line one-thirty-two, Reserve Fund. Line one-thirty-five, Town Accountant. Line one-thirty-six, Audit. Line one-forty, Elected Board of Assessors. Line one-forty-one, Assessors. Line one-forty-five, Treasurer Collector. Line one-fifty-one, Legal. Line one-fifty-two, Personnel Board. One-fifty-three, Special Legal Counsel. One-fifty-four, Municipal Technology Committee. One-fifty-five, Technology. One-fifty-nine, Other Operations Support. One-sixty, Elected Town Clerk. One-sixty-one, Town Clerk. Holding one-sixty-one. One-seventy-one, Conservation Commission.
Wait, did you miss economic?
Sir, you need to go to a mic.
No, I didn't hear you say one-sixty-two.
I said it.
Oh, I'm holding one-sixty-two economic.
What? What?
One, oh, one...
I've read up through one-sixty-one.
Oh, one-eighty-two, I'm sorry. I didn't break it.
All right, we're not there yet. We're holding one-sixty-one. One-seventy-one, Conservation Commission. One-seventy-five, Planning Board. One-seventy-six, Zoning Board of Appeals. One-seventy-seven, Open Space. One-eighty-two, Economic Development Committee. Holding one-eighty-two. One-ninety-two, Public Buildings and Properties Maintenance. Holding one-ninety-two. Two-ten, Police Department. Two-twenty, Fire Department. Two-forty-one, Building Department. Two-ninety-one, Civil Defense. Two-ninety-two, Animal Control Officer and Animal Inspector. Four-hundred, four-twenty, Department of Public Works. Five-ten, Elected Board of Health. Five-twelve, Board of Health. Five-forty-one, Council on Aging. Five-forty-two, Youth Commission. Five-forty-three, Veterans Services. Six-ten, Library. Six-thirty, Recreation Commission. Holding six-thirty. Six-ninety-one, Historical Commission. Six-ninety-two, Memorial Day. I don't have a line item on this one, but it's debt principal and debt interest. Line nine-ten, Employee Benefits. Nine-thirty, Budget Capital. Nine-forty-one, Court Judgments. Nine-forty-five, Liability Insurance. Three-hundred, Elected School Committee. Three-oh-one, Southborough Schools. Three-oh-two, Algonquin Regional High School. Three-oh-four, Acid Valley Regional Tech High School. Three-oh-five, Norfolk County Agricultural High School. Okay, we had a number of articles held. I just want to recap those, and I know you'll correct me if I'm wrong, but we held one-sixty-one, Town Clerk. One-eighty-two, Economic Development Committee. One-ninety-two, Public Buildings and Properties Maintenance. Hold on. And six-thirty, Recreation Commission. So we held those four. Did I miss one? All right. So our process then is to vote on the non-held articles, and that requires a majority vote. All those in favor of approving the non-held articles, please raise your cards. All opposed? Motion carries. All right, we'll move to line number one-sixty-one, Town Clerk. I assume whoever held that article, thank you, ma'am.
Hi, good afternoon. Marty Houlihan, twenty-six Clifford. My curiosity is just around why are we decreasing the fifteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars in the other charges and expenses? Just understanding what the Town Clerk has done for making this community a little bit more efficient, understanding what is at loss by taking this eight percent total decline.
All right, I suspect you're the, yes, the question is, why the eight percent decline? How did we do it, and what have we lost, if anything? I assume you're the person to answer that question, Mr. Hegarty.
The primary driving factor to drive us down by eight percent overall is the fewer number of elections we're going to have next year. That's the overriding. We have savings and efficiencies that have reduced costs related to dog licenses and other things. It sounds like a little, but it's added up. We also have some, salaries actually, even though salaries across the town went up by two-point-two-five percent, I think ours is up by only point-five. We've been able to do some things there as well. So we're actually, I know this sounds a little oxymoron, well, whatever the term is, we're actually increasing the services, but the costs have gone down. There is one wrinkle in here that gets a little convoluted. The State, Secretary of State had legislation in for early voting, and that is in my budget here. It gets convoluted when we have to spend the money to support early voting, and it's something we don't know about at town meeting, and then they reimburse us after the fact, and it goes to reserves and all the rest of it. But anyway, at the end of the day, we're actually improving our services, and it just, it works out that we're saving money as well.
Thank you. Any other comment or question about line one-sixty-one? All right, approval of line sixty-one. One-sixty-one requires a majority vote. All those in favor? And all opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Line one-eighty-two, Economic Development Committee. Mr. Barron.
Yep, Jack Barron, Sadie Hut, Southborough. This particular committee is supposed to develop business for the Town of Southborough to come here. What I noticed happened is we had an international corporation, KAZ, CAS, on Route Nine. They do business in more than seventy countries, and they moved to Marlborough. I asked around a little bit what happened to them, and I was told that two of the members on EDC also served on the Marlborough EDC. So they have a dual responsibility to bring business to Marlborough and Southborough. This tenant went to Marlborough. So I, quite honestly, I don't know how to amend the money, but I'm also not thrilled with the way the Amazon project, I understand, Southborough with several other towns made a proposal to have the Amazon business come to this town. I think something like that... I think something like that should have been brought up before town meeting because it would have dramatically altered the way this town is, period, if you bring seventy-five thousand new jobs to an area. So I don't know, what is the method to reduce the projected budget you want to give them?
Well, you could certainly make, you could simply make a motion to amend--
Okay, then I will make--
--line one-sixty, or one-eighty-two.
I will make a motion to amend one-eighty-two and reduce it by ten thousand dollars, and also seek the board, the board of selectmen to review dual membership in dual towns on that board.
Well, Town Council rightly points out that the, the second piece of your motion is not within the four corners of the budget article--
Okay, then we'll just--
--in terms of the membership of EDC. Excuse me, Mr. Barron.
Yeah.
But we, the, the motion to amend the, the appropriation is proper. I need a second.
Second.
I have a second. Anyone want to speak to the amendment? Yes, Ms. Conley.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Julie Conley.
Okay, I'm sorry, yep, hold on, Ms. Conley. Mr. Barron, we need you to put your motion in writing, sign it for the clerk, please. While we're waiting for that, is Mr. Parent here? I don't see him. Okay. I assume you'll be called on when we get to one-ninety-two. And then someone from REC just be ready to go on six-thirty. Jim, let me know when you're all set. Mr. Barron. Where'd he go? Sir, your, your, your motion was to reduce by ten K. You wrote five K in each line item, you cannot be that specific. We're just going to take ten K from--
It's ten K and--
Total, that's it.
Your ten K total, your associate asked me to see how to break it down. I'm, you can break the ten K any way you want.
Who's my associate? Oh, all right. All right, so, so that, yeah, we're, however Jim wants to do it. Yeah, it's a total of ten, it's not further broken down. Ms. Conley, please.
Thank you, Mr. Smino. I just wanted to clarify some of the information that Mr. Barron provided. We have one individual on the economic development committee who also sits on a Marlboro Economic Development Committee. That individual is bound by his professional and ethical obligations not to have a conflict of interest. He has appropriately recused himself in any votes that, that show any conflict of interest, and I have full confidence that, that this does not present a conflict of interest to the town. As far as CAS specifically, it is my understanding that CAS was looking for a bigger space. We did work with them, we were not able to provide a larger space in the town of Southborough. Marlboro offered some economic incentives to, to, to bring them in there, and, and that was the deal that they accepted. We simply didn't have space in Southborough to accommodate them. We did try very hard to work with them, and it just wasn't possible, given what we have as inventory here. As far as the Amazon deal, Southborough and, I believe it was Northborough, Hudson, Marlboro, were approached regionally to buy the state economic development commissioner for the state of Massachusetts, who specifically asked us to put together, to work together to put together a Metro West proposal. The timeframes were very, very short, and obviously, nothing could have been done, you know, we couldn't have just brought something in here, we would have had to go through the appropriate channels, but to put together a preliminary proposal, that was a request that was specifically made by the state, and we fulfilled that request in, in consultation with the surrounding towns.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Sir?
John Wood, Vice Chair of the Economic Development Committee. The budget this year, we came in at less than half a percent up from before, which is actually under where we were a couple of years ago, and it's purely just salary. The amount of work that this committee puts in is crazy. We're trying to bring in small business, keep the tax rate down, and with the taxes going up the way they are, this is the best time to have economic development. So I hope you support our budget. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Kalenda?
I don't think you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The board of selectmen wholly stands by our economic development committee. They have a very conservative budget, striking ten thousand dollars from a thirty-some-thousand-dollar budget for no apparent reason that I'm, that I'm seeing would be, you know, none of us, none of us on the board of selectmen support that, and we encourage the hall to strike it down.
Any other comment or question on the amendment? All right, so, yes, Mr. Barron?
Well, first of all, I want to thank the young lady for confirming that one of the members did also work on behalf of Marlboro. When the CAS development situation was in place, I believe Mr. Pizzoni, a second gentleman, was also involved in Marlboro. Thank you for confirming also that you did do the work for the Amazon project. I think we could have come together for a quick meeting, so you could have presented it to us, and we could have put in our two cents on whether we wanted something like that for the town or not. So, once again, thank you for confirming what I said.
All right, we have before us Mr. Barron's amendment to budget line one-eighty-two to reduce the, the total from thirty-eight, seven-thirty-five to twenty-eight, seven-thirty-five. This amendment requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the amendment, please raise your cards. All opposed. Okay, the amendment fails. We're now back to line one-eighty-two, approved as printed, although, also a majority vote, all those in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed. The line item passes. Line one-ninety-two, public buildings and properties maintenance. Who was the gentleman that held that one? Sir, I'm going to go to you first.
Thank you, Mr. Rob, Mr. Moderator. John Reed, thirty-four, Bigelow Road. My query is to understand the purpose for the decrease, and first expanding on that is appreciating that there's been an increase over the last few years, simply seeking explanation for, for that reversal.
Are we going, Ms. Gallagher and Mr. Parent? Want to speak to that, please? What's the reason your budget is being reduced three percent?
Hi, John Parent, Director of Facilities. Very simply stated, with the new public safety building coming into play this year, we were able to lower cost expectations, what we're going to need to put out.
So just one other, one other question, and this perhaps ties to the, the, the mention of some of the debt being retired soon for schools that are, that are aging. Does the new public, excuse me, the new public safety facility, does that adequately offset the, the need to increase the amount of maintenance for other aging infrastructure within the town?
Mr. Parent?
I am the Director of Facilities on the town side of operations. School operations would handle the school buildings.
This is a good time for maybe Ms. Johnson to get up and address that question.
Sure.
And let the hall know what you're thinking today.
Thank you. You caught me in mid rewrite, as every educator would encourage students to do. Rewrite before you speak. I was not planning, I was planning to speak today and, and planning to address any questions you might have with respect to the budget. There was a question on the floor, maybe that can be restated as I was in the middle of rewrite.
Yeah, the question is about how you are fixed for maintenance of school buildings, particularly with, you know, debt coming off the books for the schools.
Sure, we've, we've taken a very proactive stance in supporting the maintenance and facility upgrades that we need in our schools, not only in terms of an infrastructure, in terms of the physical plant, but also in terms of infrastructure with respect to technology and safe school readiness. Over the last five years or more, we have invested time and energy in making sure that our school facilities are safe for our students in terms of infrastructure upgrades, and have done that in a very strategic way, realizing that any significant increase in any one budget year can cause a dramatic impact for the overall budget. We have, as our Vision 2020 indicates, a strategic plan for a rollout of continuous upgrades. With respect to significant capital improvements on our schools, we revisit where we are with our capital plans each and every year. We're on a five-year plan, and that is, in fact, refreshed every year and shared with our financial advisory through many discussions, as well as the town administrator, and we do have a five-year plan developed. We also seize opportunities when they become available to us. Most recently, we have engaged in a submission of statement of interest with Massachusetts School Building Authority, which has released some renovation funding grant opportunities, and we have submitted three grants, actually, to MSBA, both, two of which are roofs for Triade Middle School, and for Finn, and for a boiler upgrade at Finn School as well. It's the only actual oil burner that we have in our schools at this point, and it's outdated. So we're very mindful of what that looks like in terms of short and long-term capital improvements and infrastructure upgrades, but also in each budget, thank you very much for approving our FY20 budgets, both for Regent and Southborough, but also captured in those budgets our routine maintenance, and we offset some of our maintenance requirements through strategically planning our revolving funds that we receive from Southborough Extended Day that operates and occupies our schools throughout the school year, providing quality daycare for our students after school hours.
Thank you very much.
May I take one opportunity?
Yes.
I'm not sure if I'll be able to be on stage again this evening. I'm, again, appreciative of the fact that this is five years, five years running, that you have approved our budgets, and so this is sort of a new experience for me, and my last experience, and I wanted to take an opportunity to say a couple words of appreciation to the school community, if that's okay? I promise to do it in two minutes.
Go right ahead.
Okay. When I was a teacher at Algonquin and an administrator, I liked to say to students and just about anybody who would listen that there was no place like the Reg. In my current role as superintendent, a position that I hold with great honor, I often have replaced "there's no place like the Reg" by asking, is it educationally sound and fiscally responsible? I'm, I kind of liked "no place like the Reg," but in my current role, I find that it's more appropriate to ask, is it educationally sound and fiscally responsible? The budgets that you have supported yet again this evening and in the last four years reflect this philosophy in our practice. They support defined school committee, but moreover, school community priorities that are approved each and every year and are aligned with our strategic plan. This is where I have to go back to my notes, because I was called to stage. There is no wizardry behind providing pathways for learning and growth for our students. It's realized by our actions and practices of coming together, much like today, and engaging in active dialogue and problem-solving skills that we encourage in our students. And we do this together to be good role models for our students and continue to see that this community brings growth and opportunities for our students. I thank you most, most wholeheartedly on believing in our schools. I thank you on behalf of the school community for continuing to support and entrusting us with your most precious asset. After about twenty-one years in this district, before and now, I actually know one-hundred percent certain, there's no place like where we call home, Southborough. It is great appreciation that I extend a heartfelt thank you to our parents first and foremost for always being engaged, for be willing, for being willing to have those difficult conversations when we reach a cross, a crossroad of disagreement. To our educators for never giving up on our students, ever. And I may stand here before you as superintendent, you may sit in the audience as a taxpayer, but where it all happens is the classroom. And continuing to support the highest quality of educators that we can have in our district and administrators is so greatly appreciated. Many, many years, you may travel in your life, and someone will always ask you, tell us about that teacher that made a difference. And we can all remember those that did and those that didn't, and I'm so pleased to say that our students will only, only be able to remember those who have. I thank the school committee. It is a tireless, sometimes thankless position that you hold, but we gather on Wednesdays once a month, we're on TV, it's cable if you want to catch a show, it's, and a, and an update, want to know what's going on in our schools, I encourage you to turn in and listen in on all the great conversations that are taking place. We have a presentation, I'm going to post it on the website. It lists so many great initiatives that are underway in our schools, so many things to be proud of that you, as taxpayers and as parents, have supported over these years, things that you should be proud of, because we continue to sustain what we have and target areas of growth for our students and community. And I thank the town administrators. That was sort of a new adventure for me, working with town administrators and my role as superintendent, but your commitment to this community is just phenomenal, and I appreciate the collaboration that we've enjoyed over the last several years. Mark Purple, we're always on speed dial, and your work is, has been tremendous in leading this district forward. And before I say my last thank you-- And before I say my last thank you, I want to also say I appreciate that your willingness to share your knowledge, your skill, and your wisdom delivers and provides for our students the strongest of messages, strongest of message, not by texting, not by email, but by your actions and deeds. And sending that message that Southborough is invested in them and in their future. So thank you for the privilege and the honor, and I wish you all the best.
Thank you very much. The motion on the floor is line item 192, Public Buildings and Properties Maintenance. Any other comment or question on that? This requires a majority vote. All those in favor of approving that line item, raise your cards. All opposed? Motion carries. Finally, line 630, Recreation Commission.
Marty Houlihan, 26, Clifford. I'm just seeking rationale for the 100% increase over what the overall budget is of 2.6% increase for recreation. What drives the 5.3%? Understanding it's small dollars, just seeking rationale.
Hello, my name is Don Dumont, 21, Overlook Drive, member of the Recreation Commission. This year, our Recreation Director of over 10 years will be retiring in June. The increase reflects the Commission's request to increase the salary to near the midpoint of the salary range for that position in this region to help facilitate us recruiting a new director.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments or questions regarding line 630? Okay, this requires a majority vote. All in favor of approving line 630? Raise your cards. All opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Shea? All right, my mistake. We had to wrap up. We held four articles. Typically, if there were changes, we'd have to move forward with that. So that disposes of the operating budget for 2020. Article 13, Ms. Faniff.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 13 to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer available funds, a sum of money for general government capital items for the following purposes, as printed in the warrant and displayed on the screen behind me.
I have a second. Ms. Faniff, do we want to go to your amendment immediately? Is there anything to discuss prior to the amendment?
That would be my preference, to move Article 13 with the following amendments. Item B, the library water issue, reduce it to $250,000. G, road maintenance, increase it to $325,000. H, Calander Field Engineering, $19,270. The new total amount for the articles will be $887,925, a reduction of $154,730. I have to say, before we move further on this, of all the items in this warrant...
Hold on, Ms. Faniff. Let's just get a second on your amendment. And that amendment's been submitted to the clerk. Go ahead.
Of all the articles in this warrant, I have to say that these three alone took the most time with a lot of collaboration from Facilities Director, DPW Advisory, the Library Director, and the Board of Selectmen with the assistance of the Town Administrative Assistant. And up until just the other day, these were the finalized numbers.
Sir, do you want to speak to the amendment or to the overall article? Oh, I'm sorry. Sir, do you want to speak to the specific amendment first or just to the overall article in general?
Yeah, okay. Okay. I'm pretty deaf, so... I want to, my name's Al Bazanson, 20, Different Road. And I'd like to comment on number H, Calander Field. Let me just mention that that's named after Pete Calander, who was my roommate, college classmate, best friend for 54 years until he died 12 years ago. And Pete, what I see there is a recreational field. And Pete, by the way, was all about open space. In fact, he built pretty much by himself, by hand, a nine-hole golf course on that property behind there. And I know about that because I helped him. Now, this brings me to a point. Recreational space. If this town feels they don't have enough, here's a question for you. At 32 Middle Road, there is a beautiful recreational field used by Fay School. That field is owned by the state, by DCI. And as far as I know, the town has no use of it. So I guess, what I'm trying to say is, if you want to spend $15,000 or so to do an engineering study to figure out what to do with this little rec field over there at Calander's, why don't you factor in the whole business about, well, do we need more recreational fields? And then what are the alternatives? So that's my only point. But I think that Pete Calander would be rolling over in his grave if he saw what was going on here about, we have to have an engineering study and so on and so forth. So that's my point.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Hegarty?
Mr. Moderator, Jim Hegarty, 14, Maple Crest Drive. Once upon a time, I was a Chair of the Recreation Commission, and I can speak specifically to the point Mr. Bazanson made about that property.
All right, so Mr. Hegarty, you're speaking now, not as the clerk. You're speaking as a...
As a resident.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah. And when I put my old hat on one time as Recreation Chair, I looked into that field, and the Fay School will not allow that field to be shared with the town, primarily because of parking. I also contacted the Department of Conservation and Recreation, which owns the land, and I tried to convince them when they renewed the lease, actually leased it to the town of Southborough so we could force Fay's hand to share the field. They declined, and the lease, they have a lengthy lease with Fay. But to Mr. Bazanson's point, Fay will not share that, and they do it because they're concerned about parking on the street.
Thank you. Any other comment or question? Mr. Barron?
Barron Sadie-Hardt. I'm a little confused, so forgive me, but on the Calander Field they're talking about, it says "not recommended by advisory, not recommended by selectmen." So how do we pull out this engineering study so we don't pay for it?
So just to be clear, with the amended amounts, where my pen is here, these words "not" are crossed out. So with this amendment, they are now recommended.
Oh, I see. All right. Well, what if I was to say, I don't think we should spend the money on that field engineering?
Well, you can move to amend Ms. Faniff's amendment.
Well, I don't want to tie up the meeting over this, but I do think we should skip that field. And I think some people who are very familiar with it could explain to you that that field was built as a water retention field when excessive water came off a carriage hill. And it would never be adequate to have children, seniors, elderly, or animals permanently playing on it. So I don't know if you want to have the whole, if you want me to make the amendment, is there a way for me to do it without tying up the meeting and you can move on to other things?
Well, you've got to make the amendment, put it in writing for clerk's signature. With leave of the hall, we can move on to something else and come back to this, but...
Oh, okay. So I'm going to ask the hall, I will do that.
No, no, I'll ask the hall.
Okay.
If that's something you wanted, okay. So it requires a majority vote of the hall to suspend discussion on this item and move on to the next one. So before you bother, Mr. Barron, why don't we take this vote? All those in favor of suspending debate on Article 13 and moving on and then coming back later, please raise your cards. All opposed? Okay, that motion fails. I'm sorry, the motion, yeah, the motion to move on fails. So, Mr., you could still make your amendment, but we are going to wait. Mr. Butler, do you want to speak to Mr. Barron's amendment or to Ms. Faniff's?
Does Mr. Barron have an amendment before us at this point in time?
He does.
The amendment is to strike any spending on engineering study.
Mr. Hegarty, never mind, never mind. No, we're going to wait for Mr. Barron's amendment to be formalized. Then we'll talk about Mr. Barron's amendment. Depending on what we do, we'll go back to Ms. Faniff's amendment. When we finish this Article 13, we are skipping 14 and 15 and 17, so we'll be moving along quickly.
I was hoping you were going to do...
Well, but it'll lose, because I can see they want to spend.
All right. The amendment on the floor, now officially presented by Mr. Barron, is to strike line item H, Calander Field Engineering Study, from the overall... And actually, can we, Tom, can we put up Ms. Faniff's amendment? Okay. So Ms. Faniff's amendment modifies the amounts of three of the line items. Ms. Barron's amendment of that amendment, Mr. Barron's amendment of that amendment, can you scroll it up, Tom? Strikes the last line item, item H, basically rendering that amount zero. Any comment or question? Mr. Wysh?
I'm actually waiting for the library water issue.
Well, you're eager.
I'm sorry, what?
I said, you're very eager. We're a little ways away from that.
Okay, I'm just standing here, hanging out.
Well, no, there's people behind you.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Don Dumont, 21, Overlook Drive, member of the Recreation Commission. So the Calander item here is a follow-up from last year for many of you who are here. There was a proposal to go in and repair the field for damage over the last decade or so since Mr. Calander donated the field to the town. There was concern raised as to the viability of the field and what efforts were undertaken to outline what repairs were needed. We've taken that feedback and have proposed in this item to contract with an engineer on a multi-step process. So they will perform three phases to assess the field. At each point in the process, they will report back to the Commission and to the Board the status of their progress. If at any point in those three phases, they determine that their efforts cannot result in an adequate repair of the field, the process will be stopped as part of our proposal here. As they proceed through and complete it, we expect to have a design assessment that would outline that there is a way to repair the situation on town-owned land only, this is only for work to be done on the town land, that would address and mitigate the issues caused by water coming down the hill. Bear in mind that even with that solution, anything along the lines of a field requires maintenance over a time period. And so even if something is repaired, you have to maintain the solution. So for example, remove brush and weeds and ensure that the drainage is maintained properly over time to prevent any further issues. And so that's the complement to doing this. Anything along these lines requires ongoing maintenance to prevent your investment from deteriorating. So hopefully with this proposal, we'll be able to have a favorable outcome and be able to come in the future for another attempt to try to restore this field to optimal condition. It is one of the best fields we have in town from a design and drainage perspective. It just hasn't been maintained.
Thank you. Ms. Latrell was next, and then Mr. Challen.
Mimi Latrell, 19, Oregon Road. I just wonder if the Board of Selectmen and Advisory could speak to the rationale behind why initially they did not support this at $15,000, but now at $19,000 they do?
Let's go to, it's Ms. Faniff's amendment. Let's go to Selectmen first.
Thank you for that question. When this originally came before the Board, we had incomplete information. So at that time, there was a new quote that has since come out, more accurate, that is for the $19,270. So that is how that number was arrived. I would also like to add that at this town meeting last year, one of the things that I had asked for was for process to be followed and for recreation to get in the capital plan. They've done that this year. And on top of that, with this article, there are three different footholds in this article that in between each phase that's going to take place in this article, they're going to come back to the Board of Selectmen, they're going to go back to Advisory, they're going to update on their findings on this field. So in that respect, I think as a whole, this Board continues to be in support of it at the $19,000. And again, I thank them for following the process that this Hall had asked them to do last year and come back to you with additional information on the field and kind of what the plan is for this field. As they've said, it's an important field to them. If we can take care of the issues through this study, in the long run, it's a shorter, it's more cost-effective to be able to make use of a field that was donated to the town if we can alleviate the water issues and maintain the water issues on the field. So thank you.
Mr. Challen? Okay, yes, ma'am.
Hi, Renee Murphy, 120...
Is there a max dollar that would be considered feasible to repair the field?
Without having the assessment completed, I don't think I can answer that question. We would not be, we're obviously not requesting any additional funds other than the stage-gate approach here.
I think maybe I'm not phrasing myself clearly. It's not waiting for a proposal. It's before we even see a proposal, do we have in mind what we would consider a max feasible spend?
So, you want to know exactly what the maximum?
It's like having a budget to go grocery shopping. I don't wait till I go to the cash register.
So, if we go back to our study from last year, I think the range is between 150 to $200,000 for a complete project completion. So, this represents, I think, about approximately 5% to 10% of the overall project. Obviously, there is no approval to proceed without making it through these stage gates.
Yes, ma'am.
Jenny Pete, 9 Atwood Road. My understanding is that there is a subdivision that's uphill of this field, and my question is, is the study going to consider ways of infiltrating the stormwater runoff from that subdivision that is presumably impacting the field?
Mr. Dumont, you should stay up there.
The solution that's being sought here is to correct the issue only from the perspective of town-owned land. So, whatever solution would come here would be, would have to accommodate ongoing water coming down the hill and then route that water appropriately so that it does not infiltrate the field itself. We're not proposing to make any changes outside of town-owned land.
Mr. Challen.
I'll do better with the mic. Roger Challen, 29 Oak Hill Road. If the, and I'm a supporter of recreation and fields, seems like we might be swimming uphill on this. You know, to try to deal with a runoff situation that's not gonna go away if the, and I know this isn't the committed amount, but if this is gonna potentially cost 150 to $200,000, even if we find we can solve the problem, would we be better off looking at spending that money somewhere that doesn't have a runoff problem?
All right, thank you. Any other comment or question? What's before us is Mr. Barron's amendment to Ms. Fannis' amendment. Mr. Barron's amendment would strike the entirety of line H on the table in the motion. Mr. Barron's amendment requires a majority vote. All those in, sorry, what? Oh, okay, yep, thank you, Mr. Kalinda. Mr. Kalinda's reminding me that obviously the Advisory and Board of Selectmen supported Mrs. Fannis' amendment. They do not support Mr. Barron's amendment. I did consult with them while we were going through. All right, with that, this is a majority vote on Mr. Barron's amendment to strike line H. All in favor of the amendment, please raise your cards. All opposed. All right, the amendment fails. We're back to Mrs. Fannis' amendment, which alters the dollar amounts in line B, line G, and line H. Mr. Bezanson spoke to that. Mr. Wyshin.
Yes, I have a question about the library water issue.
This is line B.
Line B, yes. I'd like to have the library weigh in on this as to whether they approve this amount. And I'd also like to hear from the Board of Selectmen as to why this was reduced by a substantial portion, given the fact that the library has serious, serious water issues.
Let's, Mr. Donovan, you were, somebody with you prepared to answer that question. Go, please.
Is John Parent here too? Do you want to talk, John? So, originally, we were looking, we worked with an engineering firm with the facilities department, Weston and Sampson. We looked at an underground water diverting tank. In continued engineering studies, we decided that that wasn't the way to go.
Basically, there are several measures that are gonna actually happen on the library property. Met with Mrs. Gallagher about a month back, and we reexamined together the Main Street project. She was able to make some changes to that outside of the original scope, which allowed for better drainage systems, which have been passed through, basically, her engineering firm looked at them, as well as Weston and Sampson over the library, and came to the conclusion that this, at this time, seems to be the most appropriate solution to the problem at hand.
So, I'm not clear. I think the question is, does the library, is the library in accordance with this amendment?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on Ms. Fannis' amendment? This requires a majority vote. All those in favor of Ms. Fannis' amendment, raise your cards. All opposed. Motion carries. All right, so now we are, I mean, I think it's gonna be essentially the same. Any further comment or question on the article overall? All right, then, all those in favor of Article 13 as amended by Ms. Fannis, as you see on the screen, please raise your cards. Majority vote. All opposed. Article 13 passes. Article 16, Mr. Kalinda.
Mr. Moderator, move that the town vote to amend the general bylaws of the town by adding a new revolving fund to Section 16-9 of Chapter 16 entitled Golf Course as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second? Mr. Kalinda.
Mr. Moderator, this is simply create a revolving fund to apply golf revenue to the golf course.
Sir.
Hi. It's probably a really stupid question, but I couldn't find the answer.
Name an address, please.
Armando Vinciguera, 14 Pearl Street. But is the golf course owned by the town or is it privately owned?
Sorry, Mr. Kalinda's mic. All right, any other comment or question on Article 16? All right, this is a majority vote. All in favor of Article 16, raise your cards. All opposed. Article passes. Article 18, Ms. Brascio. What's your point of order? Please rise, sir, state your name. Can you stand up, please?
Andrew Bass, 50 Oak Hill Road. Did we vote on Article 12?
We disposed of Article 12 in the original group, consent group at the beginning of the meeting. I don't know, you may not have been here at the beginning. Hold on a sec, did we hold 12? No, we did not hold 12. We did not hold 12. Just confirm. Article 18, Ms. Brascio.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to accept a deed of conveyance in lieu of tax foreclosure from Robert J. Brascio Jr., I'm sorry, Robert J., isn't that funny? My son's, that's my son's name and middle initial, sorry about that. From, from Robert J. DePietre, yes, take my Mountain Dew away, thank you very much. Trustee of, he'll appreciate this, trustee of Southborough Realty Trust, owners of certain parcels of land located 0 Kimberly Lane, Assessor's Map 9, Lot 16, and Map 9, Lot 34. Pursuant to the authority of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 60, Section 77(c) is amended. Being a portion of the same premises referred to in a deed recorded on May 21, 1993 in the Worcester Registry of Deeds, Book 15201, Page 248. Said parcels contain 1.97 acres and 1.34 acres respectively, more or less.
Is there a second? All right, Ms. Brascio.
Yes, this article authorizes the town to accept a deed in lieu of tax foreclosure. The owner is voluntarily conveying these parcels, which is a requirement per state law.
Any comment or questions on Article 18? All right, Article 18 is the acquisition of an interest in real estate, and that requires a 2/3 vote of the hall. All those in favor of Article 18, please raise your cards. All those opposed. All right, I declare a 2/3 majority. Article 18 passes. Article 19, Ms. Gillespie.
Hi, I'm Freddie Gillespie, Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. I thought we were further up, sorry. So, make a motion to see if the town will vote to accept the report of the Community Preservation Committee for the fiscal year 2020, community preservation, projected receipts, and act upon the recommendations of the Community Preservation Committee as printed in the warrant. This is our annual budget where we put the required percentages into the different accounts for the open space, historic preservation, community housing, and we have some admin. So, does the whole thing come up on the screen or do people just read it?
That's the motion. As printed in the warrant. This is Warren, Article 19.
I lost my sheet, sorry.
Comments or questions? So, this is, please stand wherever that came from. Yes, point of order, Mr. Hamilton, what is it?
You need a second.
You are absolutely correct, sir. Do I have a second to miss? Thank you. Comments or questions on, I count on that, Mr. Hamilton, I appreciate it. I'm not kidding. Article 19, comments or questions? All right, all those in favor, this is a majority vote. Please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Article 20, Ms. Gillespie.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator.
Yes?
Dana Rourke, 5 Ledch Hill Road. I'd like to make a motion, since we were just talking about the Kalanderfield, I'd like to make a motion to move Article 30 forward so we can discuss that now.
What's the reason for wanting to move it forward?
Since we were just talking about line item H on a previous article, I think it would be appropriate to continue the discussion now based on that Article 30.
Article 30, you guys, you could flip to it in your warrant. Article 30 is a citizen's petition to form a Recreation Resources Committee. Taking an article out of order, as I mentioned earlier in the day, requires the consent of the hall, and so, and it requires a majority vote. Hold on, don't quote me on that. Yeah, I just wanted to be very sure. It requires a majority vote. And so, this would be a motion to move Article 30 ahead of Article 20. All those in favor? All opposed? Okay, that motion fails. Article 20, Ms. Gillespie.
Did we get a second?
Did you make the motion?
I'm sorry. I got sidetracked there. Did 19 pass?
19 passed.
Okay, sorry, guys. Article 20, make a motion that the town vote to appropriate $50,812 from the CPA Historic Preservation Reserve Fund to be applied towards the bond for the perpetual preservation restriction on 84 Main Street, also known as the Burnett House, for the purpose of historic preservation. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee and the Town Treasurer.
Is there a second?
This is a required payment towards the bond for the preservation restriction on the Burnett House that we passed a few years back. It's an annual requirement. And if we don't pay for it here, the town has to pay for it somewhere else, so.
Thank you, sir.
Peter Lupine, 27 Parkerville Road. It's my understanding this structure has been sold to a private developer who's been doing development work on it for the last year or so? Is that not correct? The Burnett House, has it not been sold?
Actually, no. The Burnett House was owned by the individual who still owns it today, and the preservation restriction is a town-owned restriction that restricts what he can do there. He owns it, he's a private owner, and as long as he's within what is allowed within that restriction, he has full rights to that property.
So, why should the town be spending money on it if we've already given the developer a million dollars to develop it?
Well, we haven't given him the money. This bond is the service on that expenditure. So, that's been voted and passed at previous town meetings. This is making good on what we've agreed to in years past.
It's a 20-year bond. Every year for 20 years, we have to make a payment because we didn't fund it at the time we gave the money, we got a bond. It's like you have a mortgage, you don't own the house, you have to pay the mortgage, so.
And what's the outcome if we fail to make the payment?
Brian?
If we fail to make it?
Brian, what happens if we don't pay our bonds?
Bad things. The town, the town side would have to pay the bond or would have to default on the bond. You don't want to default on a bond, though, because then it is bad things.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other comment or question on Article 20? This is a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Article 21, Ms. Gillespie.
I make a motion that the town vote to appropriate $178,404 for the bond on the Halloran property for the purpose of open space preservation with $175,000 principal and $3,404 fiscal year 19, short term, no. $41,597 from the CPA Open Space Reserve Fund and $136,807 from the CPA General Unreserved Fund. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee and the Town Treasurer.
Is there a second? Ms. Gillespie.
Last year, we voted to purchase the Halloran property, and we placed a bond on it. And this year, after careful consideration and looking at future revenues and expected other expenses, we voted to pay the bond off in full this year. So, this takes care of that purchase and the other items in the warrant.
You don't want to default on a bond, though, because then it is bad things.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other comment or question on Article twenty? This is a majority vote, all those in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Article twenty-one. Ms. Gillespie.
I motion, make a motion that the town vote to appropriate a hundred and seventy-eight thousand four hundred and four dollars for the bond on the Halloran property for the purpose of open space preservation, with a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar principal, and three thousand four hundred and four dollars fiscal year nineteen, short term, no. Forty-one thousand five hundred and ninety-seven from the CPA Open Space Reserve Fund, and a hundred and thirty-six eight oh seven from the CPA General Unreserved Fund. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the Community Preservation Committee and the Town Treasurer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Gillespie.
Last year, we voted to purchase the Halloran property, and we placed a bond on it, and this year, after careful consideration and looking at future revenues and expected other expenses, we voted to pay the bond off in full this year. So this takes care of that purchase and the other items in the warrant article from last year.
Comment or question about Article twenty-one? Okay, this is a majority vote, all those in favor? All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Let me just mention quickly that Article nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, which we just went through, I did want to say before, these are routine annual articles, either to pay our annual bond obligation, or in the first, case of the first article, to fund CPA for a new year. These also would have been appropriate for the consent list at the beginning of the meeting, but I didn't have a chance to check in with Ms. Gillespie ahead of time about that. Next year, we may well have those on that list, so just FYI on that. Article twenty-two, Mr. Mills.
Can I, can I interrupt for a second? Andrew, could you come up here, because you may need to answer questions from the podium? Thank you. Andrew Mills is the vice chair, and he's going to be putting this motion on the floor and giving the part of the presentation.
Mr. Moderator, I move to see if the town will vote pursuant to Mass. General Laws in Chapter forty-four as amended, Chapter forty-four B, or any other enabling authority to appropriate and borrow the sum of money not to exceed the amount of one million and forty dollars for historic restoration of the Southborough Library Building, including costs incremental or related thereto for a period of not less than twenty years, as written in the warrant.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, obviously, the entire text of the warrant article is long, a good portion of it is reproduced here. Mr. Mills.
So, there's probably going to be a discussion on this one.
Can you take that mic up to where you are? There you go.
So, as you all know, the, the library in the center of the town is very unique, it's a beautiful building, it's a centerpiece of the town. For those who go regularly, or even drive by it, you'll notice that there's been a lot of deterioration over the years. There's a presentation that we have some experts here to talk about for the restoration. This is specifically for the original building, not the addition that happened in nineteen eighty-nine. We're looking to restore the exterior, the windows, the sign on the, on the top, and also the roof. Part of this, too, the CPC.
Pardon?
Why don't you take, why don't you take the mic out? Hold it.
So, part of this, part of this as well is a preservation restriction that would be developed by the library trustees, the selectmen, to meet the Massachusetts Historic Commission for the PR to be recorded. That is also supported by the library trustees and the friends of the library. Is there, I think there's another slide. So, here you can see the, you know, the front of the library, over the years, has been a lot of deterioration. The, the repointing is going to happen on the bricks, the front facade in general, and restore the stairs that most people can't use, or that gets shut off in the winter as well, and then also the windows. And I'm going to pass it off to some of the experts who would be helping and coordinating the restoration project.
I'm going to introduce Lynn Spencer from Spencer Sullivan and Vote. She was the lead on our assessment project that we approved at town meeting last year. She's going to give a brief presentation about the library facade restoration construction phase.
Thank you, Ryan, and thank you all for allowing me to speak to you today. Our firm specializes in the rehabilitation and preservation of historic buildings, most of them of this, of quality, and this is a wonderful representation of the kind of building that we enjoy working on. This is a nineteen twelve-era public library, built during the time when public libraries were coming into the, to the forefront. Is a sign of civic pride, it was a well-built building, and it has endured for over a hundred years with periodic maintenance, but nothing extraordinary until now. This is a load-bearing masonry structure built of red, water-struck red brick, limestone and granite, high-quality materials that do endure. I would like to point out to you that as you look at the building, the upper portion of the building is ra, you see the limestone band, I don't know if this works. Is there a pointer? For those of you who, who have, can look at Google Earth, you would actually see that that forms basically a bathtub on the roof, because the roof itself is about two feet below that topmost limestone band. We were looking at all elements, so I want you to hold that in your minds, we were looking at all elements of the exterior envelope, and in general, the masonry work is in relatively good condition for not having been repointed in over a hundred years. There are areas of some erosion, notably this S O U T portion of the, this sign itself has some erosion, and that's a natural feature of the limestone itself. In other areas, there were some iron anchors that were embedded into the masonry, we're not sure why. We are suggesting that they be removed, because otherwise, it will eventually cause deterioration, rust jacking and so on, which will damage the masonry. The front steps have already been mentioned, they have settled, and our proposal, our recommendation is that they be dismantled and then re-erected on a solid footing. There is some slight amount of corrosion, not slight, but visually intrusive corrosion as a result of rust staining, that can be cleaned and removed. Other areas that are notable on this building, the windows, beautiful historic windows that certainly have stood the test of time and with maintenance, can continue to serve useful functions. There is some wood repair that is needed, as you can see in this, the upper slide, but otherwise, most of it is scraping and painting, preservation, maintenance. We do suggest new storm windows, because the existing storm windows have exceeded their service life. Now we, now we get to the heart of the matter. The most significant part of our investigation had to do with the roof work. This roof, you are seeing some areas of deterioration in the upper portion of the stonework at the roof parapet I mentioned earlier. You see some cracking, as well as deteriorated caulking in the joints, and also some, some split, split joints in the copper work in the parapets. I mentioned that the roof basically forms a bathtub, and like any bathtub, it requires a drain. There's a single drain in the middle of this roof, and you can see it in the upper portion of this picture. One of the things we did was we employed a roofing contractor to work with us to do some test cuts, and what we found was, were several significant findings. You are looking at a ballasted membrane roof that was installed in nineteen eighty-nine. That roof is near the end of it, is at the end of its service life, but when we did the roof test cuts, we discovered that the insulation below that roof was completely saturated. That, and then below that, was another roof, and that was the original tar and gravel roof. We, we did some testing for hazardous materials, and we found that there's asbestos in some of the caulking and in the fiber of the tar and gravel roof. That tar and gravel roof probably was, was actually giving some good function, because those of you who, who go to the regular, library regularly have noted that there has been some staining on the interior as a result of roof leakage. That tar and gravel roof probably helped protect large portions of the library below, but at this point, it, the entire sort of complex of roofing materials deserves to be replaced entirely. The other problem that we observed is that when the roof sheeting was, was installed, it was not properly detailed. So it was sort of pulled up and tucked under the edge of the parapets, and when we cut away that material to take a look at the condition, you can see the backside of that parapet was severely damaged as a result of, of condensation that couldn't escape. Other areas of improper detailing have to do with the fact that termination bars were actually mechanically fastened to the stone, and that caused that stone to spall and break apart. So there's been a lot of caulking to patch things in. So our recommendations really do focus on the roof and the parapet area in particular. As I said, that is, is, that roof is at the end of its life, and without actually intervention at this point, there's risk of water damage on the interior and continuing deterioration of the masonry at the parapet. So the colored markings indicate where we are recommending repairs and preservation repairs, and then we are also recommending work on the windows, mainly in terms of scraping and painting. That's the roof from above, that roof, the, the larger wing was added in nineteen eighty-nine. That is your public library in a nutshell. It is deserving of an investment at this time in critical roofing and masonry repairs, and to extend its service life for the next hundred years. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything further?
No, we're here to answer questions if they arise.
Questions or comments about Article twenty-two?
Were there any boards or commissions, were you going to ask that question?
Well, yes, I was. So, as far as what's up on the board, you can see that advisory does not support the article. Selectmen at town meeting, have we taken a position? Not yet. Okay, any other boards or commissions who wish to offer a position on this article? Mr. Hubley.
Joe Hubley, Sixth Winchester Street, Chairman of the Historical Commission. The Historical Commission, back in January of two thousand eighteen, took a couple votes on this project. The Southborough Historical Commission determined that the library facade restoration project is significant in history, architecture, archaeology, and cultural Southborough. We also took a, a, a vote that we reviewed the CPA project, the application for the library facade, and we support the project described in the application that was filed with CPC. This piece of property, this building located at the intersection of, of Southborough is in the heart of, of downtown. We fully support this, and would like to see this, the money appropriated to keep that building there forever. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Library trustees?
Yes, Richard Wallace, eighteen Clifford. I am Chair of the Library Board of Trustees, and we have an opportunity here to pay for the historic restoration of the original nineteen twelve building using Community Preservation Committee funds. This is money that you've already paid, or we've already paid through our taxes, to a fund set aside for historical preservation in our town. Using CPC funds would require an, a preservation restriction. That restriction will protect and preserve the original building, but will not prevent us from renovating or constructing a new addition to the library. If we choose not to use CPC funds, and we want to prevent our library from deteriorating, we would need to request capital funds from the town, probably affecting the tax rate. So many of you have shown your support for the library in the past, and we are grateful for that. I'd like to thank the volunteers who helped us get ready for the opening of our children's room this morning. But you've shown that you, you value the library as, as a cultural resource, and consider our original building as an important part of our architectural heritage. I hope you will help us protect that resource and preserve our heritage today with a vote in favor of this, this article. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I want to clarify one, no, no, we're not done, don't worry, sir. One thing that needs clarity, because it is relevant to the quantum of vote on this article, and Mr. Mills, you know, rightfully alluded to as printed in the warrant, but this article, in addition to the funding, requires that the town seek and apply a preservation restriction to this facade, as was just mentioned, as a condition of using CPC funds. So when we get to the vote, that aspect of the article bumps this to a two-thirds vote, because it is an interest in real property, so I want to make sure that folks are aware of that. Now, I got to go over here first, and then we'll come over to you, Mr. Clear. Go ahead, sir.
Sure. Ethan Arudelubert, one eighty-nine Middle Road, first town meeting. Thank you.
How, how are we doing so far?
I'm okay, it's, it's good. I'm actually just looking for clarification, so the, one of the main goals of this project is replacing the library's roof. However, back in the twenty twenty budget, in line nine thirty, there's a library new roof item for a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, so I was wondering how those are different.
Mr. Donovan.
So, Article twenty-two covers the historical restoration of the nineteen twelve roof. The nineteen eighty-nine addition, there's an additional section of the roof that is not historic, so that money covers the eighty-nine addition.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Jim Colery, fifty-one Central Street. I think this is my fiftieth town meeting. And I hope by the end of the night, you won't say, the end of the day, this is my first and last. The concern I have, for the Board of Selectmen Advisory, we now know we got a bad roof in this building, there is no doubt in my mind, you know, I've been around this town all my life, that building's not going to go away. I mean, even if we built a new library tomorrow, the Historical Society and others, which I understand, are going to say, whoa, we're going to save this historic building. So if we don't do this tonight, today, I keep saying tonight, because I, this is the first day town meeting, I think, what are we going to do to make this building survive? One of the problems I have with the town of Southborough, and my family goes back a hundred and fifty years, is in recent years, we had this ability to kick the can down the road, well, we'll kind of fix it now, and we'll deal with it later, and we never deal with it. We're, we're dealing it with the police and fire station right now for something we should never have done with the police station in the first place. So I don't want this building, five years on down the road, to be, well, now it's really in bad shape, and we need three times the money to fix it, to bring it back. So if we, if the advisory committee and the Board of Selectmen don't think we should do this, so be it, what are we going to do to make sure this building doesn't deteriorate any further? As I walk in the building, I'm your wire inspector for the town, I've been very concerned about this building and a few other buildings in the town. So I decided when I came here today, that if this came up, and I was going to express my concern, that this can, if we're going to kick it down the road, maybe to next year for, for fiscal reason, and we can at least prevent further deterioration of the building, so be it, but we just can't say, well, we're not going to pass this, we're not going to let it go, and we'll tell you- and we'll take this up at another date. We need to know what the other date is going to be and how we preserve this property. Because have no illusion, this building is not going to get torn down in my lifetime or yours. Historical preservation is going to keep this building alive for a lot of reasons. So let's get some decisions made on that.
Thank you. Mr. Kalenda, do you want to respond to that on behalf of selectmen? And I'll go to you, Ms. Cook.
I would, Ms. And often, if not always, Mr. Colery is exactly right, and this is another one of those instances. We also don't want to kick the can down the road. In fact, we're trending support for this particular amendment. The challenge has been whether or not we should put a preservation restriction on it. If we go with the CPC funding, it'll come with a preservation restriction. Nobody in the hall can even amend that piece. What we've been talking about was, will it, is it sustainable for another year? Can that roof continue? And it's, we've, you're correct, we've kicked this particular can down the road for some time and the roof is still holding. It's not going to always be that way. We would be taking a risk, I think, to go another year. But it could very well also hold for another year. If we were to fund it through another article next year at this town meeting, which we would be committed to do, I know, well, I would be committed to work towards, it could be bonded for 10 years and it would, it would be, we're going to pay for it one way or the other, whether or not we do it tonight, or for instance, we do it next year through a bonding mechanism. The challenge I've had all along is why should the town restrict itself by putting a preservation restriction? And I'll add one thing. And this has been my challenge for some time on this particular issue because we are very supportive of the library. But if we, if, for instance, the Peter's Annex, the high school, that is now the police department, if there was a preservation restriction on that, would we have been able to sell it to St. Mark's and then build our new public safety facility? That's my concern for the residents of, you know, 25, 50, 75 years from now that may want to do something with that library who are not in this hall tonight. We would be restricting, you know, the town forever if we put a restriction on. So I'm looking for clarification on the absolute need for a restriction and whether or not it would make sense to do this tonight, or do we do it through, say, a bonding mechanism for over 10 years, next town meeting?
Okay, Mr. Rooney's going to speak on behalf of advisory in response to the question.
So advisory struggled with this. We spent numerous hours with the library and with facilities. And our concern is the concern that was expressed by Mr. Kalenda. We are unanimous in our support for the library, but we are concerned with the in perpetuity, the fact that this is forever and the restriction attendant to this article. We specifically asked CPC, could we use CPC to do this project without the restriction? And the answer was yes. So the money would be available to do this without the restriction if this hall so, was so inclined. But the CPC is not going to amend the article to remove the restriction. Our concern is, forever is a long time. And in five years, 10 years, 20 years, if the library receives state money to build a new facility, or if the library receives state money to renovate and remodel this existing building, is this restriction going to unnecessarily restrict their ability to do that work on this site because of the restriction? So that was the indigestion that advisory had about attaching this money or agreeing to this article for in perpetuity. It's the forever that advisory ultimately agreed not to support this article. We support the money. We support the CPC money being used for this purpose, but we don't support the preservation restriction in perpetuity.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney. I think I need to go to Ms. Gillespie on a point that you just made. Go ahead, Ms. Gillespie.
Just to be clear, the question was asked, was the CPC obligated to require a preservation restriction on the property? And the answer was legally, no. It's best management practice to do so. The CPC thoroughly reviewed this. We went in front of the selectmen and heard their comments. We went in front of advisory and heard all of their input. We went back, had another meeting, and thoroughly reviewed it again. And we decided unanimously, again, to support the article as written, which cannot be amended on town meeting floor by anyone other than the CPC, that is unanimous in agreement. For a dollar amount of over a million dollars on a historic preservation project, we would not be doing our duty for community preservation to not ensure that the historic resource we were spending money on remained a historic resource. Somebody even suggested that, well, in 15 years, when the library needs to be redone, we might want to tear it down, and we'd still be spending money on the 20-year bond. Additionally, for, sorry, I lost a train of thought. The historic part is the only part that is restricted by this. The library has full ability to tear down the new addition, to add on to it, to build up. It does not restrict the ability to make additions or renovations to the building itself beyond the facade of the historical resources. And as, sorry. This is a significant historic property in the town, and to not ensure it's staying in the town in perpetuity would make this be nothing more than a maintenance project. And the reality is, almost all historic preservation is really a case of delayed maintenance. If you maintain your properties ongoing, they don't need historic preservation. When you get to a place where you haven't restored it, some of this in 100 years, it requires historic preservation. The committee is very much in favor of supporting the library, but if the town does not view this as a historic resource they want to protect, we feel we have no ability to recommend to you to spend CPA money. This money means we won't be able to do other historic projects. We won't be able to do other recreation projects. We won't be able to do other open space projects. For 20 years, we're going to be tied up paying a bond of significant amount of what we take in for the CPA. That's a choice we looked at. We looked at the impact of the bond. So it's your choice. If you don't want to have this building stay perpetually historic, you can vote no and hope that next year, town meeting's going to vote to raise your taxes by, I think, 2%, 500? The building alone to do the roof without any of the other work is like $570,000 without CPA money. Now, if that's what your, you know, your selectmen and advisory are recommending, you know, that's your choice. But we can do other historic projects if we don't pass this tonight with the money we won't be spending on a project that in our deep review would not be historic if you don't put the preservation restriction on it.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to go over here, Mr. Butler.
John Butler, 4 Davis Road.
I'm sorry, Mr. Butler, let me interrupt you. I just want to correct one thing Ms. Gillespie said. This motion, and any CPA motion, actually can be amended with regard to the dollar amount. That can be altered, lowered, it cannot be raised. I'm not suggesting you do it, I'm just saying, just to be very clear about what's amendable about this motion. The substance of the non-monetary part of the motion, that is to say, the preservation restriction requirement in the article, that cannot be amended. Go ahead, Mr. Butler.
Yes, thank you, John Butler, 4 Davis Road. So two points on this. One is that a few years ago, when advisory committee was looking at long-term capital projects as a part of trying to decide how much debt we could engage for the public safety committee, public safety building, we went to various major potential capital spenders and the library was one, saying that in the 25-year debt horizon, the need for a new library might, maybe should be in our plans. This is very, very far from approving anything, but we just needed to have some frame of reference for how much spending we would need. I find it that I would prefer to be able to consider something like this with some more, some more meat on the bones about a plan with regard to what the library's plan is. It may be that we would decide if the library wants a new building in the 10-year timeframe and has a different location to put it in, that we wanted to preserve this anyway, but it's a little disturbing to have a million-dollar proposal with nothing about the future plans of the library before us, when at least a few years ago, that was able to be raised as an issue. The other general comment I would have is that I have difficulty voting for this when there's such a lack of support for a complex issue like this in particular, when there's such a lack of considered support by the people who have more time to spend looking at it, which is advisory and the Board of Selectmen. With such weak support on such a complicated question, I'm inclined to not go forward suddenly with it. And I guess lastly, the thing I would say is that the value of CPA versus general tax funds these days is quite diminished from what historically it was. So essentially, if you, if you as voting members of the public think you don't want a preservation restriction on this, you're not saving a tremendous amount of money by going the CPA route with this in particular, and you should vote whatever you think is right. I'm personally not sure what I think is right, but if you, but isn't it as though the state is paying, you know, 50, 60% of these monies anymore? And so you should just make what you think is the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. We're still next on this side. Then I'm coming over here.
John Reed, 34 Bigelow Road. One project, one local project that comes to mind to me is the restoration or expansion of a local church. And from what I understand, that was about a million dollars or so to do that. And I also understand it was accomplished through fundraising. Curious to know if the library trustees or any other expert from the library can speak to that opportunity to fundraise and see if that could cover the cost. Thank you.
Brian, do you have a quick answer on that?
Sure. We have not explored at this point independent fundraising to help fund a historical restoration project. I mean, we were trying to see what we could do as far as this town meeting. You know, we could explore that possibility, the trustees and I, in the future, but we haven't, we haven't explored independent fundraising for this particular project at this time. One of the trustees is welcome to respond as well. We are, wait, sorry, we are applying for local grant money to help. We just, again, we need to sort of get the project funded initially before we can explore some of the historic state grant applications.
All right. Thank you. Right over here, sir.
Mark Murphy, McNeil Drive. I'm also a member of the Community Preservation Committee. I just wanted to comment on the funds we're considering. Funds, funds under the Community Preservation Act are tax dollars, to be sure, but there's also some funding thrown in from the state. And it's really tempting to consider this just another source to use for municipal projects, even municipal projects upon which we can all agree are appropriate. And that's simply not the case. There were restrictions on the use of funds under the Community Preservation Act. And requiring the historical, requiring the preservation restriction is entirely consistent with the purpose of the act and our charge as a committee. The idea that we'd use funds that are supposed to be dedicated for historical preservation for something that we're talking about, well, it might be knocked down in 10 or 15 years, so we really want to untie our hands. That, to me, is an inappropriate use of the funds, and I couldn't support that. It's, the restriction is entirely consistent with the legislation, what we're supposed to do as a committee, and the entire purpose of this is to preserve historic resources, and that's what it would do. I personally think it's an impressive marriage between, you know, using the historical preservation funds for historical purposes and joining it with other funds to fund a very appropriate project. But if people feel otherwise, that's fine, but I strongly urge you to support the preservation restriction. What Mr. Butler said as well a few moments ago, I also take a little bit of an issue with. I think everybody's in agreement that this is an appropriate project. The lack of support is, wow, should we support this with a restriction or not with this restriction? It's not the project itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weis.
Michael Weis on 189 Corderville Road. I'm speaking also as the president of the Southborough Historical Society. Mr. Colery is right, this building isn't going anywhere, hopefully, because it is the heart and soul of our community. It is the heart and anchor of our downtown. This facade is what is, let's face it, folks, the library is the only fun town building to go into. Fire department's fun? Yeah, sometimes, as long as your house isn't on fire. My point here is that a preservation restriction is entirely in keeping with this type of preservation of a facade. And also, it's limited only, so everyone understands, simply to the facade itself. If in subsequent years, the library needs to expand to the back or up or behind, there's no problem with that. And also, I'd also like to point out that this library was given by the family of Joseph Burnett with a deed restriction on the land that it remain a library. So if it were ever to be changed or moved, that would have to be something that would be dealt with. But let's hope we never come to that because this building really is the heart and soul of our community, and we should and need to preserve it. It's in terrible shape. Thank you.
Thank you. Right over here.
Karen Muggeridge, 15 Parmenter Road. I very much support the preservation of the library and the facade, but I also understand the concerns about the preservation restriction. So I don't know if there would be an appetite for this within the hall, but I would propose a indefinite postponement of this article until next year, allowing, Ryan's not happy with this, allowing possible fundraising for the library to occur, or by the library to occur, and allowing the Community Preservation Commission to come, be willing to reconsider and come back proposing the article without the preservation restriction. So I'm making that motion.
So the motion's been made to indefinitely postpone consideration of this article. Any comments or questions about that? Well, do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions about the motion to indefinitely postpone? Yes, ma'am.
Jessica Devine, 1 Pinecone Lane. I feel like maybe that motion came up because of confusion about what a preservation restriction actually is. Maybe somebody could explain that and the pros and cons of it? It sounds like it would only be on the facade. So if we found out that, for example, the way the water works in the basement would be forever flooding and it becomes something that's not sustainable in the future and we have to build on to the side of the library, say, we would be able to do that, right? So we're literally just talking about a preservation restriction on the facade. So could somebody explain exactly the pros and cons?
Hold on, hold on. What's the point of order? Please stand up.
Please forgive me. The motion on the floor is to indefinitely postpone, and that should be the subject of debate?
Well, she clarified her remarks that she believes the motion was made as a result of confusion about the restriction and the scope of it. I am about to go back to Ms. Muggeridge to have her clarify whether that's the case or not.
I don't believe I'm confused.
All right.
Okay, well, I'm confused. So if somebody could explain that, because I don't know whether I support what she's saying without knowing.
Yeah, no. Did I hear another point of order in the back?
Marguerite.
Please stand up, ma'am. Please stand up. Yes.
Marguerite Landry, 134 Deerfoot. I'm on the Library Board of Trustees, but this has nothing to do with that. There's a motion on the floor that's been seconded to, to, what was it?
Indefinitely postpone.
Yes, indefinitely postpone, yes. And I think that needs to be voted on, that needs to be voted on before we can do it.
Well, we, no, we can discuss the motion to indefinitely postpone. And that's what I was asking. I do, I do agree that, you know, the comment was framed as not understanding why the motion was made. Ms. Muggeridge just clarified that. So I, I need, we need to confine our comments right now to Ms. Muggeridge's motion.
So, okay, so that I, I'm not sure if this is exactly how I'm supposed to do it, but I'm saying I, in response to the indefinite postponement, in order for me to vote on that, I would like to understand more what a preservation restriction is and the pros and cons of it. That's what I'm saying.
All right. I'm going to have Town Council speak to that briefly. Thank you.
Basically, a preservation restriction is an encumbrance on land, very similar to an easement. If you buy a house, you own the fee of the property, the land itself, but there may be an easement on the property. This is similar. The difference is that private restrictions are limited in time to about 30 years unless they're re-recorded. This is a public restriction, and under state statute, it is, it is in perpetuity. Although, there is a legal theory that if something changes historically down the line, then with the actions of the general court or the Commonwealth, it could be changed. But for all purposes, it is in, it's a restriction on the property duly recorded at the Registry of Deeds in perpetuity that protects the details of what that preservation was about, in this case, the facade.
So I guess I'm not, it only protects the facade in this, this preservation restriction?
It, it protects the exterior of the building.
The historic portion of the building.
Okay, okay. I think, I think we're all set on what a preservation restriction is.
On the second, on the motion to postpone.
Hold on, Mr. Barron, please.
Yeah, Mr. Barron.
Any, no, 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 I haven't recognized you yet. Any further comment on the motion to indefinitely postpone? Anybody that was at the mic before Mr. Barron?
No.
All right, Mr. Barron.
Okay. On the motion to indefinitely postpone, these people did a lot of work putting this together for us, and I think they are entitled to a vote.
Thank you. Any further comment on the motion on the floor?
That was the motion. I don't think we should indefinitely postpone.
Any further comment from any of the other 316 of you, other than Mr. Barron, on the motion to indefinitely postpone? Yes, ma'am. Over here.
Mr. Moderator, if, if at all possible, would it be, would someone be able to bring up the exterior footprint of the building so the audience understands what the facade is? It's not just the front of the building, it's the adjoining small piece before you get to the new addition to the building.
Um, I'm, Ms. Fan, if I'm going to hold on that, does anybody else want to comment on the motion? Call for the vote on the motion itself to indefinitely postpone. Yes, ma'am.
Nicole DuBonne, 5 Sadie Hut. I am also a library trustee. We are talking about this year's budget. This year's budget is three months to 15 months away, okay? That is fiscal '20. If you are postponing this by another year, you are talking a year and a half to two and a half years out. We have asked many times for capital projects to be placed into the budget, and year after year, they have been put off, as someone else stated. The can has been kicked. We have gone outside to find another solution, because every time we have brought this as a capital project, it has been pushed off. We'll do it next year. We have heard the support, and this is where we have gotten the support, is from the Community Preservation Fund. This is not something we should push down another year, another year. The building is literally rotting. If you don't solve these problems, it will continue to rot over the next year and a half, two and a half years. We have had an entire floor closed for six months because we have not been able to fund the capital projects that have been necessary. Please do not support the motion to push this out another year.
Miss, no, Ms. Muggeridge, I'm going to go, I'm going to go to somebody else who hasn't spoken yet, right behind you.
David Officer, 17 Blackthorne Drive. And on the motion to postpone, my question is, and I don't know if anybody knows this, how urgent is that repair needed, and can that roof? Is that me?
Can we speak quickly to the condition of the roof?
Thank you.
Am I allowed to speak to this?
Yes, please.
I'll just remind the audience that when I, when we did the test cuts on the roof, we found that the insulation, four inches of insulation was soaked. I said that the roof below, which is the original roof, may be doing some duty. I, there's evidence of leaking within the building, and the possibility exists that there's damage to the roof deck because of the, the moisture-laden insulation. So I don't think this is a project to push off a year or two. I think there's an urgent deed need now.
Thank you.
Okay, sure. Next at the mic, gentleman on this side as well.
I have a point of order.
What's your point of order, Ms. Muggeridge?
So on the postponement issue, I started out by saying I have no problem with this project. I have a problem with the preservation restriction. Maybe I'm not totally familiar with the upcoming article that's addressing the roof issue. If there is some, and, and I'm not in favor of pushing this out, which is the only, I see postponing it as a way of preserving the preservation restriction.
Okay.
If there is some way, if there's some way for the, for the present, community preservation people to take the preservation restriction off, and from what I've heard discussion before, they are the only ones that can do that, I will withdraw my proposal.
Yeah, okay. The motions, the, the article's not amendable as is. The only way to withdraw would be to withdraw the article itself. Let's go to this gentleman right here.
Ken Boy, 10 Ashley Road. My question is more on the, how the million dollar, a million dollar forty was derived at? Have there been bids? Is there a breakdown of the cost?
All right, so that, that's, that's going to be outside the scope of the motion on the floor to indefinitely postpone, but we'll come back to that if we don't. Ms. Rosenbloom, are you speaking to the motion?
Yes, I am, Mr. Moderator. Betsy Rosenbloom, 5 Strawberry Hill Road. I'm rising to speak about Ms. Muggeridge's motion. I am not in favor of postponement. I, full disclosure, I was a library trustee about a decade ago, and Nicole DuBonne, I could not have said it better. We were kicking the can down the road 10 years ago. We couldn't get these things approved through the capital budget. A lot of people have worked very hard, they can't reach agreement, but that's not a reason to postpone it. And I urge everybody to vote against indefinite postponement and decide this. Oh, and to move the vote. Let, I, I move the, move the vote.
All right. So, 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 I heard the, I, I think you're making a motion to move the question on-
Move the question, thank you.
On the motion on the floor, which is the motion to indefinitely postpone. It's not debatable, requires a two-thirds vote. So we're voting on whether to approve, actually, I'm sorry, we're voting on whether to stop debate on Ms. Muggeridge's motion. That requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor of moving the question, please raise your cards. All opposed? All right. Now, we, we need to vote on Ms. Muggeridge, her motion to indefinitely postpone. That is a majority vote. All in favor of indefinite postponement, please raise your cards. All opposed? All right, that motion fails. We're back to the original motion. Mr. Hamilton. Yes, you're right. Sir, I apologize. When we, now that we're back to it, please ask your question.
All right, thank you. I'm just wondering how concrete those costs are and whether there's been any drilling down on the costs and breakdown of what's roof, what's steps and stuff, and whether any considerations been done as far as staging the project, you know, dealing with the roof right away, perhaps the steps a year or two down the road.
We speak to that, please.
So, so the costs are available on the library, the cost estimate, which is detailed, it's available on the library's website. The costs were derived in three different ways. Number one, we asked for the roofer who came out to do the test cuts, a well, a well-recognized roofing company, to provide four different estimates on four different types of roofing. So that's a roofer's estimate. On the masonry, we did cost estimates based on comparable projects that we have in our office, and the same was done on the windows. So these are, there's a detailed quantities estimate. You'll see square footage, unit pricing, all of that on the library website. It also, you raise the question about phasing. You know, there is always that question, what portion of a project could be put off? I've made the point that the roofing and the related masonry there too needs to be done in the very, very near future. You know, the windows, you know, they, I think, are also, you know, we've got wood repair issues, they all, it makes sense to do them. The front steps are, are quite honestly a safety hazard. They're starting to buckle and so on, so there's, there's a potential trip hazard. And so you want to not, you would like to avoid an accident, for instance.
Thank you. Mr. Hamilton.
Al Hamilton, 35 Pine Hill Road. I don't think there's any question that the work needs to be done. I think the, the big issue, as the selectmen and advisory have pointed out, is the preservation restriction. And the right to decide whether we should or should not have a preservation restriction with respect to this project should be reserved for the members of this hall and not for an appointed committee, meaning no disrespect to that appointed committee. What should be done is the two articles should be brought forward, one with the preservation restriction, one without the preservation restriction. Moved together, which can be done in a parliamentary process, and then we can have a full debate on the merits of a pres, preservation restriction. And I would respectfully suggest to the Board of Selectmen and Advisory and the Community Planning Committee that a million dollars is a lot of money, and we bring this back at a fall town meeting because we don't want that roof to get any further, any older, and that we vote to reject this with the understanding that we would proceed in that fashion. Thank you.
Just to clarify, I, I, I think Ms. Gillespie made the point earlier that the use of CPC funds for this project dictates the preservation restriction, so we can do it without, and that is the guidance that I also received when I-
No.
No, 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 no. Let me, let me finish. When the question came up about whether this article was amendable with regard to stripping the, the preservation restriction out of it, I did a few things. I read the statute, I read the, the language of the CPC myself, CPA rather. I also called the Division of Local Services of the Department of Revenue. They are the lawyers that are charged with administering the Community Preservation Act in the Commonwealth. And I put this question to them, and he said, "Are you calling from Southborough?" Because I'll tell you, this is, this is a novel question for them, and they had caucused in the office on that. I believe others from the community had called with the same question. The very definitive guidance I got from the lawyers at the state is that CPC funds should not be expended without a preservation restriction to back them up. That is, that is part, parcel of the existence of the CPA. And so that is why this article is not amendable, or I won't take a motion to amend it for that reason with regard to the, the PR. So I, I don't believe spending PR, CPC money without a restriction is a realistic option. If, if folks want to defeat this amendment today or indefinitely postpone it, and, and others want to look into it, that's fine, but that's, that's the guidance I got. So we can come back in the fall with a CPC article with a restriction or a general funding article that does not use CPC funds. That's my understanding, and given guidance by the state.
Point of order?
What's the point of order? Who is it?
Was there recently a vote against indefinitely postponing, or did I miss it?
It's, it's not a point of order, Mr. Barron. Let's go over here, ma'am.
What is it?
You missed it.
Ask your neighbor. Ask the person in the seat next to you, please.
It was voted against. They, the, the, the town meeting voted not to indefinitely postpone, so how can you suggest bringing it up again?
The suggestion was Mr. Hamilton's, right here, ma'am.
I need a reader for Blenheim Woods Drive. I have a fiscal question. The CPC wants to borrow a million dollars to do this project. I, don't we have money in the, in the fund already?
Ms. Gillespie, speak to the bonding, please. I'm sorry, ma'am, I didn't, I didn't mean to ruin our-
That we can tap.
Yes, sorry. Ms. Gillespie.
So with respect to everyone in the hall, the Community Preservation Act, the legislation gave the Community Preservation Committee great responsibility and great power that is not typical of any other committee in towns. And the people who, though, appointed to that committee are dedicated and very thoughtful and very well-versed and knowledgeable, and come from all aspects, representing different areas that the CPA funds. We have recreation, housing, open space conservation, planning board, at member, at-large members, I might have forgotten one, but we have a nine-member committee, and we take our work very seriously, and we all came unanimously from different aspects of community needs in the town for our project recommendations to the town. We have made a recommendation looking at the funds available and the funds, future coming in, and recommended bonding. I don't believe at this time we could afford to bond it. We don't have that much, but-
You can't afford to bond?
No, I'm sorry. We don't have the money to pay outright, but even if we did, that's a consideration that the committee looks at, and also is looking at what might also be coming up down the road that we would want to fund and have monies available. So it's not this one project, and then we spend it all and we're done. You know, there's-
I, I'm sorry. I was not aware of how much money the CPC has available. I know we pay our taxes every year, we give money to that fund.
We have, I'll take this off-
I was just asking.
All right, one at a time, please. Let her finish.
I was just asking why we were, we were floating a bond for, borrowing the money instead of-
Well, one of the other-
We don't have it.
One of the reasons is also, when you have an expenditure of over a million dollars, and it's for long-term use of the people of the town, the best fiscal practice is to have as many people who get the benefit of that use to pay for it. Not just the people in town here today, but down the road, that's another reason you bond. Additionally, I'd like to take this opportunity, in like April or May, and we'll be publicizing it everywhere, we have a community preservation open forum, and invite everyone to come in. We go over everything CPA, anything you want to ask, any goals or needs you have or think we may have. We ask for your input, and we invite you to come, and prior year's presentations are online. And we've been doing this every year for 13 years.
I apologize, Ms. Gillespie. I was not disparaging you or the committee. I just wondered how much money was in there, that's all. So, sorry.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Right over here.
Craig Nicholson, 68B Flag Road. I'm concerned about the restriction as well. As a real estate developer, I've come across properties that have restrictions on them, and the idea that we can knock something down, build up around it, is not what I've experienced. Granted, I haven't been directly involved in it in Massachusetts, but generally, when those types of things are being looked at, they have context in relation to the historic structure that have to be resolved in order for them to be approved. And to say that we could just knock down the back new part of the building, build something else new, and just not touch the facade, I think is misleading in terms of what restrictions are really going to be in place with this.
Can I respond to that?
Yes.
There's libraries throughout the Commonwealth that have done just that. They save the historic facade and add new additions and back. I believe Westboro recently did that.
Shrewsbury.
Shrewsbury, excuse me. So it can be done?
But not by right?
Yes, by right. It depends on what the restriction restricts, and this is not to restrict anything beyond what's written in the article.
All right, I'm going to go over here, then to you, Mr. Rooney. Here first, please.
Joe Provo, High Ridge Road. Sorry about that. I was a little confused at the, the selectmen comparing this to the police station since we, it is like not a completely fungible situation. I mean, we've got a deed restriction that restricts it to be a library, it butts a historic cemetery. It's at a center, crossroads center of town. There's no like adjacent entity that's going to want to buy it. I, I, I'm fully in support of, of making this piece of, of our town permanently as, as, as a cornerstone, just as it was years ago, voting to support making Chestnut Hill permanently a piece of, of our town and its conservation restriction because it's part of the town's character.
Thank you. Mr. Rooney.
Mr. Moderator, I just want to make sure that I in this hall understands what you just said with regards to your conversation and what the advisory understood based upon its multiple meetings on this issue. I represented earlier, according to the CPC representatives, that this project, this money could be spent from CPC funds to do the historic renovation without the preservation restriction. And that was based, and we asked that multiple times because it was important to the advisory that this historic building be restored historically correct. The, the, the difficulty we had was with the restriction.
Yeah.
Now, it, it sounds, at least what I heard in your narrative, is that this money has to have attached to it a preservation restriction in order for the money to be allocated under an article proposed by the CPC, which is different than what our understanding was.
Yeah, in order to be allocated with, with monies, with historic preservation monies by CPC. Town Council admonished me after I made my statement that I didn't end it with "and town council agrees." So I'm going to let him just, no, it's a serious question, I understand. And the timing, by the way, of my, of my conversation with the state was, you know, today's Saturday. I think it was Monday this week, but...
Yeah, if I could, if I could just add before town council, I, I think I drew the short straw on advisory because the, we're perceived that we're anti-librarian, anti-historical restoration, and that's not the case. We want this work to be done. We'd like the use of the CPC funds to be used. We just have a tremendous reluctance on attaching something which lasts forever, which, at least in our opinion, would impede a future renovation and may impede the library's ability to expand to another location. That was, I just wanted to make that clear, that I, I, I got the short straw to speak today.
I have a motion. Since the article cannot be modified and it is either we vote for this and we already voted or not postponing, can we just ask the question and move on to voting?
Okay. I'm going to have, I'm going to have town council speak to Mr. Rooney's comment, and then if there's a, you know, we'll, we'll take that up after that.
Okay, very briefly. The town moderator indicated to me that he spoke to state lawyers. Well, I take all of that with a grain of salt, so I studied the statute again to try to see the, the intent of what they were saying. And I have to say that I agree, that the, the theory is if you're going to be using this portion of taxed money to the, to the residents of the town, then there has, for preservation purposes, there has to be some permanent type of restriction or protect, protection on the property. So we agree.
Ma'am, if you want to get back up, I don't want to, I don't want you to miss your chance, but I, I did quite understand your, your point. Name and, name and address, please.
My name's Alekna Sabati. I live in fourteen Pearl Street. Do you want me to repeat my motion?
Yes, please.
My motion is to move for vote.
Okay.
On Article twenty-two.
Second, second.
All right. The motion's been made to move the question. There's been a second. I do have the discretion to hear this gentleman, who's been waiting a long time, but sir, I'm going to ask you if you have anything to say that hasn't already been said.
One, one, it is actually a question about the windows, the facade.
What's the, go ahead.
So the question is, I'm, first of all, I'm Matthew Probst, thirty-one Woodland. I'm very supportive of restoring the facade and preserving it and so forth. My question is about the, the preservation restriction on the windows. Those windows are certainly very beautiful, very old. Will they be preserved in a way that they can be energy efficient as well? My concern is that single-pane glass windows aren't very energy efficient enough, and can we ensure that the building in perpetuity can have energy efficiency?
All right, so I'm going to take a short answer to that, short answer to that question, and then we're going to take up the motion, the motion to move the question.
A repaired wood window with good weather stripping and a, and a very good store, low-profile storm window is an excellent energy conservation option.
Thank you. So, there's a motion on the floor to move the question. It cuts off all debate. It's not a debatable motion. It requires a two-thirds vote. If the motion passes, then we will immediately move to a vote on the article on the floor. All in favor, sir, I'm sorry, but I have to take this motion first. All in favor of the motion to move the question, please raise your cards. All opposed? All right, so that motion carries. That ends debate on this article, sir. I apologize, but it was made before you stood up. We will now move to the vote on Article twenty-two. It requires a majority vote, I'm sorry, requires a two-thirds vote because it's a bonding article and, and involves an interest in real estate as well, so this is a two-thirds vote on Article twenty-two. All in favor, please raise your cards. All opposed? I declare two-thirds majority and the motion, or the article passes. Article twenty-three, Ms. Gillespie.
Sorry, I have a motion.
What's your motion, sir?
Armando Vinciguera from fourteen Pearl Street. I would like to make a motion to move Article twenty-five to discuss now because I, I think it's pertinent.
Yeah, no, we're going to, we're going to, we have one, we have just a couple minutes left. We're going to take Article twenty-three, and then we'll be back at seven to finish the warrant.
I just think it's pertinent since we have a bigger quorum now and it will be...
Ms. Gillespie.
I make a motion that the town vote to appropriate fifty thousand nine hundred and ninety from the CPA fund, general unreserved, to conduct conservatory and restorative work for historic preservation on significant historical items of the Southborough Historical Society as written in the warrant.
Sir, a second. And just to remind the hall, our session ends either at five or at, at the time that the article under consideration at five is ended, so we will end after this article for this session. Ms. Gillespie, go ahead.
I just... Point of order?
Point of order, sir.
Yeah, how many articles are left after we finish twenty-three? Because I don't have a memory of how many we signed off on at the beginning.
Okay, I'm going to ask you to look at the warrant. It's not a proper point of order. Go ahead, Ms. Gillespie.
It's not what?
I'm going to introduce Michael and Rebecca from the Southborough Historical Society, who are the project proponents on this article.
This one is forward? So, overall, the Southborough Historical Society has been working very, very hard in the last few years with the, the help of CPC funds to recover from a fairly dramatic flood, which damaged the entire building and a large portion of the collection. We have been working on the old burial ground restoration. We are developing an interactive burial ground map, the Civil War flag conservation, which we're going to be talking to you about now, as well as the Civil War veterans' grave markers. So of our, the request in front of you today, a portion of it is for the restoration of this William Buck's flag. The Buck family was an historic family here in Southborough. William Buck volunteered from Southborough to go fight in the Civil War. He fought in three major battles, the Savage Station, the Allen's Farm, Nelson's Farm, Malvern Hill, some of the bloodiest fighting of all of the Civil War. And then his luck ran out at the Battle of Antietam. He was shot in the head, did not die immediately, was taken to Philadelphia where he would have died in, in the military hospital and was subsequently interred. So William Buck was hugely popular here in Southborough. He was much beloved, and this was a huge shock, was one of our first Civil War dead. The people felt so badly about this that the officer, Peter Fay, went down, the, the recruiting officer, went down to Philadelphia to get his body. He was disinterred, brought back here and buried with full military honors in the burial ground. This flag was made for William Buck's coffin. It is an exceedingly rare survival of this type. It was handmade, there's thirty-seven stars on it, all hand-sewn, and it's almost the size of what you see here on this slide. It's five by nine because it was made to cover his coffin. It is in very, very precarious condition at the moment. It was given to the town library, we think, in eighteen eighty-three by Frances Buck, who was the cousin of William. She was the town librarian for thirty years when the library was still in the town hall. And when the library moved to its current building in nineteen twelve, this flag was transferred, this flag was transferred to the collections of the library. Now, over the years, it became somewhat forgotten, and in two thousand and seven, along with many other historical documents, it was transferred over to the Southborough Historical Society. Now, the request is to take, I'll send out the flag. It's sent to a specialty company up in Andover, which is the company that does the flags for Smithsonian, the U.S. Navy, U.S. Army, to preserve this and put it on permanent display at the Southborough Historical Society. I mean, this is a, an unbelievably rare piece, an amazing survivor, and really speaks very loudly to the sacrifice that this young man, twenty years old, made over a hundred years ago in the early days of the Civil War. So our request today is for the restoration of this flag, and we can go into details if you have questions about that. And, whoops, I just turned off the monitor. Isn't that fun? There we go, oop. And the rest of the remaining half of the money is for the continued conservation of our collections. This has been an ongoing process. We have just completed the first CPC grant, and we predict that this will take another two years, which is the term of this request from the CPC. You see here some of the documents in their current mixed-state photographs. On this one table alone are things dating back into the early seventeen hundreds and things dating from the nineteen sixties. So parts of these collections are still in a huge jumble. We've been working very assiduously. And by the way, if you, if you haven't had a chance to come and see the museum, which has now been reopened, it's open on Saturday. Sunday's from eleven to two, or twelve to two generally, and by appointment. It's really an amazing transformation. I think you will be very, very pleased and surprised. So our request again is to conserve and continue the stewardship of our collection, to continue our understanding of our history and the people who shaped our town, and most importantly, to make these collections accessible to the public. Part of our process is bringing this stuff online and bringing this history back to life for the town of Southborough. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions about Article twenty-three? All right, Article twenty-three requires a majority vote. All those in favor? All opposed? Article twenty-three passes. I do, I do want to, before we potentially adjourn for the afternoon, you know, our rules allow the hall to agree to keep going if we want to, but I'm not inclined to ask for that unless I, I hear a significant desire to do that. Otherwise, we will adjourn for now and, or we will, we will recess for now and we will reconvene at seven PM. Mr. Barron, you want to speak to that?
Yes, I asked a question earlier. It would help some of us, me in particular, if you told me how many articles were left, and then I could make a decision as to whether we should extend this current meeting.
Mr. Barron? Yes, sir?
I think a lot of people left thinking that that was the last article before the break. They have children, they needed to go do dinner. I think extending it now after they've left, thinking that was the end would be...
Yeah, I tend to agree with that, but if the, if the, you know, if the hall demands it, we'll do it. Otherwise, we'll see everybody back here at seven. Do I have motion to recess until seven PM? A second? All right, okay. See everybody at seven. Thank you.